Would you please stand and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to the meeting. Next thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from March 9th.
I make a motion we improve the minutes as amended. I think there were two versions that were sent out. And the latter version was fine to me.
Did I just say the information she needed? Because she wasn't clear on a couple of things.
Why aren't we? Can't make the changes to the minutes in public at the meeting? How come we're doing it over email?
She had a couple of questions about who made a comment because I guess she couldn't discern it from the from the tape.
Well, we still need to take and do the change in public in the meeting so that people know what has changed.
What was changed, Chris?
She wanted to know if the adjournment was the correct time that she put down. And to my recollection, it was because we had two hours. And she also wanted to know who asked the question about the flashing sidewalk signs, and that was Deja. So I just confirm that because since she doesn't know everybody and if they, people are making comments and not saying who they are, it's hard for the scribe who hasn't lived here her whole life to know who people are.
Was that all of the changes?
That was all the changes, I think, to my recollection.
And so this meeting is being recorded and those changes are now part of the public record?
Yeah.
Okay, that, okay.
That's what we should always do. Should always be transparent. So there's a motion by Ken to approve the minutes with the, those changes. And a second by?
Chris.
Chris. I hope he got that. So all was in favor of the minutes from last meeting? And Tim?
I was not here. I wasn't feeling well.
Next on the agenda is our department reports.
Keep in place, Paul Ferling. Just some, some highlights. June 5th. They have, excuse me. They have the 5K race for the fair on June 18th, 8:00 AM. West Danforth is organizing that event. He's asked us to assist him with traffic control during that event. Next is National Light Out. We're planning on that for July 26th. It's normally scheduled for August. We're doing it a week early. And that will be Monmouth PD at four, four in the afternoon?
Six.
Six, excuse me. Can't read my handwriting yet. Then on April 30th, we have the Drug Take Back Day. We're going to set up the transfer station. We're going to set up at the transfer station with Dan Probel to do the drug take back. You don't have to do anything. We'll take care of it. Give me a spot instead of them. Sounds great. Monmouth Fair running from June 16th to the 19th. They have a live band coming in. They expect to draw a pretty good crowd on that. I think it's Friday night. So we'll be in, in, in force. I'm sure during that event, they may, they may be talking somewhere up in the area of a thousand people possibly. I've just been asked to sit on the RSU 2 Futures Board. That's meeting this Friday and Saturday. It runs from 3:30 in the afternoon on Friday till 8 o'clock Friday night. And then again, Saturday from 7 to 4. Basically, what it is, it brings together about 70 to 80 stakeholders in the RSU 2 communities to look at where the future, future of education, how we can put together a plan to, for the kids going forward. I stand on it. They called and asked me. And then we're shooting for May 1st for a cut over date for, for Monmouth PD to go over on Winter's primary radio frequency. We should have all our radios up in our cruises by then, so we'll be working on, on with the primary. And also, if everything goes through, we're also shooting for May 1st for a cut over for the record management system going back, going over to Spillman. And going away from the IMC that we have now. Basically, that's it in a nutshell. Just wanted to give you guys where we're going, what we're doing, and where we're at right now.
Paul, the Futures Board is this weekend or?
This weekend, yes.
Okay. Hi, Bill.
Hey.
Dan, you want to go?
Good evening. Dan, I'm Public Works Director. Truck updates. The new truck that we ordered last July-ish with approval from town meeting. That was supposed to arrive in April. Speaking of them last week, the truck is now scheduled to be built in July of this year. And then, and that's a best case scenario. And then if it shows up, then it could still have outfitting for plow wing and other accessories, which will determine availability when they have a truck. So fingers crossed that we have this new truck for the upcoming plow season, but in all actuality, the way the world's going, I don't anticipate it. The other truck that's been down waiting on a backorder part. That's a Ford F-550. Ford notified us last week that they don't anticipate getting the part, so they just discontinued the part. So that truck is still down. We are exploring many options of trying to get the electronics pieces that are in need of repair rebuilt somewhere. We are scouring every place we can. Judge Garrett's nationwide search is looking for the part. I'll have an update when I have some better information, but this point, that truck is still down or remained down until further notice. Let's see. We are chasing dirt roads on a daily basis this time of year, as you know. Everybody's saying this year is worse than they've seen in a lot of years and it is in a way, and it isn't. You know, the deep freeze, the thaw, then the rain, and the refreeze didn't do well with the roads. We're good on most roads. Almost every day of the week with the grader. Added a lot of gravel and fill in areas we need to, and we'll keep chasing them. Transfer station wise, I've seen a big uptick in activity in the last two weeks. A lot of demo, sheet rock, shingles, demo wood. People are getting active, which is good, but seeing the uptick. And actually, one thing that we didn't mention at the meeting a couple of weeks ago. Keith Ross, my foreman, gave his notice his last day with the town on the April 1st. He's taking his talents to the private sector, looking for a change of pace and having some winter time free to not be plowing 24/7. So I wish him well in his endeavors. He's going to be missed dearly with his knowledge and talent with equipment. At the moment, I'll make a question.
What's a part that you can't get?
It's a transmission control module. It's basically the computer for the
No, I know what it is. We, we, we had a truck that was down for three months waiting on that with Ryder and they worldwide couldn't get it, so they wound up finding a wrecked truck and bought the wrecked truck so they could get that part. So that's really what you're up against.
It is.
And, you know, we just, we just had our old trucks, our trucks came off, last trucks came off lease. Our new trucks were ordered this time last year, due in October, and they came in. We just got the last one today of eight. So, you know, I think you're absolutely right that, you know, if you see it this fall, you'll be lucky.
Very, very much. That's hopeful.
Yes, always hope.
Do we need to do anything to reauthorize the transaction if there's that kind of delay?
No, because it was, no, you don't.
Okay. And how does the pace of volume at the transfer station compare to this time last year in terms of?
With, with the uptick the last two weeks, it's now on, on last year's pace, which was above average, to say the least.
Sure.
But it's good to see people working on their, you know, residences and making improvements. So just, just seeing the result, so.
Thank you.
The, I currently am soliciting prices to try to refine it. It's, it's in your discussion tonight, so it may not matter, but I'm soliciting prices for windows on the town hall for the ones that don't function anymore. And I'm also soliciting RFP for pre-auditing services. Our pre-auditor left. That's partially why we don't have an audit for last year because it wasn't prepared in time for the auditor to work on that. So I'm trying to get somebody into that. The last thing is the work is going to begin over here on the Academy Building very shortly. The, the demo company has the key and they're going to be bringing in the remediation people next to get all the hazardous materials out and then it should start coming down. I think they thought it would take 45 days for the remediation, and then after that, the building will be coming down.
RTO doesn't do?
They do our audit. Traditionally, Monmouth has had a pre-audit done so that the audit is less expensive. So, so what they do is throughout the year, someone, someone sort of compacts it all into a very auditor-style binder. That's something that they would want to look at so that when they get here, they don't have to do a lot of digging into our books to get the answers. It's basically a nice prepackaged thing to give to the auditor so they don't have to spend so much time here.
They've
That person got done and then we were in between, as you know, we were in between finance people for a while, so everything kind of got backed up. So now we're trying to dig out from all of that.
Well, I guess that's it. Oh, Select Board reports? I took the opportunity to talk to the police chief tonight briefly. There's a new scam out there. I want to make everyone aware of it and I will probably be doing cyber awareness classes through the Lions or somebody in their future. But the gist of the scam is if you're trying to sell something on Craigslist or Marketplace or any one of a number of online sources that people utilize for that sort of thing, someone will message you, ask you for your telephone number, and then say they want to give you a code to verify you're not a scammer. And then when you call Google and verify that, they give you instructions about calling Google to verify it. And then Google will expressly tell you not to share their, their, that information, the number that they give you with anyone. But the scammer tells you to do it anyway. A lot of people fall for it and then they steal your telephone number. And if your telephone is linked to your bank accounts or your, or other things, or your computer accounts or things, you've just put yourself in an extraordinarily compromised position. They're thinking of new things every day and it's just sad. I don't know. Is this a time to bring, bring up the the dirt roads? The, the new company that, oh, that is owns or will be owning Beaverbrook. Would like, they're going to add maybe 200 more campsites and they would like the Wilson Pond Road paved the rest of the way.
Or something like that. Sure, yeah.
Great. Do they have the money for that? They probably do because they're a big national company. And I guess Wayne is also very concerned. We're concerned about the development of the land. And of course, we take care of the police down in Beaverbrook.
And we We only go up as far as the gate. The majority of the campground is in Wayne and in Leeds.
Right.
So we, we have two campsites that actually are in Monmouth. Other than that, everything else is in another jurisdiction.
So you no longer cover any they call?
If it's in those first two campsites, we will go and we'll go to backup and assist any, any other agency. But we're not responding to Leeds or Wayne to cover complaints that happen in that, that community.
And fire?
I'm assuming it's the same. I can't speak to Dan, but
No, it'd be a mutual aid, same as what you do. Okay. And
What happens, what happens if they have a domestic in the campground and it's in Wayne? Obviously, we're going to be the first people on scene, okay? We're going to respond and bring the tension down until the responding agency arrives and takes the complaint over.
But, but we do a lot of, we do coverage there nevertheless, and and of course, we don't get any property taxes because it's all in Wayne. And so we're and we take care of the road. And then there's the Cressy Road where we've, I think this whole board has gotten emails from
Yeah, I didn't get an answer. Yeah, never received an answer to that, except for Ken, and I want to thank you for answering, Chip.
We, I answered.
The year before, but this year, Ken is the only one.
But I answered to Chip this year. I answered him this year, Ken.
I checked him before I came. Ken was the only one that answered.
Oh, I wonder why.
You did, and you told him it was on the agenda for this year.
And I answered him last year too, but I wanted to find out from Dan how things were going out there before I answered anything this year, so.
You did do the Packard Road, which is not a, you know, and that was only a mile, that's a mile. And on our road, it's 1.5 miles. And if you went all the way to the other hot pot, it would be 1.7 or 1.8.
And I know that when I answered, I said that we were, it was on our radar. We were looking into it that we'd had a quote from a couple of years ago, 1.6 million.
Was 1.6. I was told 1.7.
And this year, expected to be maybe at least 1.8 to, to hot top that part. So, and I know that the road department is constantly looking at, you know, trying to keep the road in, in passable shape. But no, you're saying no?
They tried, but it's not, yeah, it's not the greatest. I know they tried. I know they tried. I, I tell them they tried, but it's, it's not the greatest.
Yeah.
I tell them they tried. And they came today. They tried. They went today, but I know they tried. I'm going to tell them they tried. I tell them that when they call. I tell them that when they call. I say call two, three times a week. They do.
So you're the one, I think.
Probably. I tell them all the time. I'm the nicest person. I call all the time.
And actually, at the end of our driveways, going out into the road until he came today, there were so many potholes, you couldn't escape one to get into our driveway. But he fixed it today.
I call. I'm probably the nicest one. They tell, he tells me that too.
You are. It's nice to meet you, Richard.
The thing is, that concerns me, is two years ago, there was petition put in here. When I called last year inquiring about it, I was told they don't have a petition. I know it was. So I went last year and got a copy of it and I sent it in here and then the new town manager, when I talked with him this, he didn't know anything about it. I mean, I know, I know it came.
Yeah. We got copies of it. It was when Kurt Long was our town manager. Before we had Linda Cohen. We got a petition from you guys.
And the reason I did it last year is because the town manager that was in at that time was a woman and I told her about it. And she said, well, I wasn't here. I said, but you took the job, you took the responsibility of everything. Something needs to be done about that road.
I go to the doctors every day. I have health. The road is bad.
Dan, what's your opinion of the road?
The road is, is some par at best. There's not really much of a base left to work with. That's just a simple fact of it.
Can we work some crush rock into those really bad places while it's really soft and kind of stiffen that up?
We do. We've hauled a few loads of crushed rock over to try and get the soft spots to hold better. Yeah, the, the rain coming in the next 24 hours. We spent four hours on the road today in the grader, hauled a few loads in the bad spots, just trying to, to get it to smooth out, get the, the potholes because they were terrible. Part of what we were fighting today, just to get in a little bit sentimental, is that gravel, the tar, the dirt sticky and it would roll, it would roll out, but it wouldn't roll back very well and, and flatten out. It was just sticky, just dealing with temperatures and moisture and it just wasn't very cooperative to be, to be as specific as I can, so.
It's not his fault.
But yeah, I, I'll say I'm in total favor of that road being paved because it's, it's, it's I would have to put, I could put a, I've been looking at, I've been doing some calculations. I could put $50,000 of gravel on that road this year and it really wouldn't make much of a difference. It would, by next spring, we'd be in the same position we're in now. It, it needs a lot of drainage work, more drainage work that I can do in one year. There's not much base left and there's a lot of wet spots in the road, a lot of natural springs. The other parts are ledge. So the water just, the water either comes up or has nowhere to go. So hence why the estimate for the road was so high to pave it because there was so much to dig out, to put in a good base, so.
Spots we can only put one car go through, that's how bad it is.
And it's unbelievable. And they got a lot of houses on that road. It's not like this one to people.
Yeah.
To go to a dead end road.
Yeah.
That one got paved.
You know, if, the other aspect of paving that road and, and the cost being so high is that it's my opinion that that road and pave will become a connector road, a very highly traveled connector road. Well, it'll, it'll increase. So if we, if we don't put a good base down, we'll be chasing the road constantly just due to the high volume of traffic. So if we're going to do it, we really need to do it right. We don't want to just put six, eight inches of gravel base down and call it good to get the cost down to, let's just say for argue, let's say a million dollars because you, it'll be, it'll be penny wise dollar foolish to do it. So if we do it, we need to do it.
I think I remember from Keith talking last year about the fact that because of the ledge, it would be extremely difficult with the drainage if it wasn't done correctly, which could include some blasting because how do you, you can't move ledge. I mean,
Right, yeah.
And you can't just pave over it, you know, because
Right.
we know what happens there with the frost and all of that, so.
And, and any, you know, even if we, if we went to try and put some reclaim down, come up base of reclaim or, or a harder gravel rock substance, it's, there's nothing there for it to, to have good settlement and they're really packed. It's just going to continue to have water reach. And it may, it may get you through a year, maybe two years, but it will then just continue to do what it does now and the water will just reach up through, so. We're, we're fighting a losing battle, unfortunately.
Couple of things. The issue of it being a connector has been brought up several times before. I brought it up several times. I would like to see, Justin, if you can talk to DOT and find out if they can do a traffic study on that road. They may not be able to do on a road itself, but they may be able to do it on, on 202 and 132 for the, for the traffic that leaves and enters at those points. That'll give you a good idea of what's going on there. The other thing is when, one of the main reasons we decided to do the Packard Road and to do the Gilman Road was we did extensive research on the cost of maintaining dirt roads at the time. And it was pretty obvious that in a 10-year period, you'd spend quite a bit less on a paved road than you do on a dirt road. Enough less that it practically pays for the paving. So there's a lot to be said for paving those roads. And the Cressy Road is arguably possibly the worst road in town from what I have seen. I've driven it quite a bit. Even in my four-wheel drive truck, going at 10 miles an hour, it's almost too rough to ride on occasion.
My trucks get in the meeting.
The only other one that I find that is, is difficult is the top of the cemetery road. It's not quite as bad as the Cressy Road though, but the buses, when the bus route goes over that, the buses struggle in the springtime to get up over that road.
Good news about that one is there are fewer residential properties there that, but the
and the bus
unpaved part.
And the bus, bus route can probably be changed not to, to use it. Okay. So I don't know what, we, obviously, we're trying to do what we, we can do. And sometimes we're going to have to maybe bond again to pave. Well, I would say one thing for sure. It costs money to do an engineering study and do the design for the road. I, I don't know if it's $50,000 or $60,000 or $80,000, but personally, I think there should be a question on this year's warrant to allocate that money and do that design engineering study so that everyone knows exactly what we're looking at. I mean, the road crew can speculate all they want. It's going to cost this money, it's going to cost that money. We can, we, we're going to have trouble with this part. We're going to have trouble with that part. We might be able to do this here. It might be able to do that there. An engineer, engineering firm can tell you exactly what you need to do.
We actually, the pine tree engineering is the one that gave the quote on the road and they gave a breakdown. I have a copy of it, just one though. It was 1.659 million and it's two miles exactly from the Route 202 to the Pine Hill Park.
And that quote was how many years ago?
That was last year.
Last year?
Yeah.
We, we have an expert in roads. We have a couple of experts in roads right here, so I'd like to hear if they have any comment. Either one of them has any comment on that situation.
So my name is Pete Coffin. I'm the director of the Main Local Roads Center at DOT and have been for 37 years. I've been working for DOT for 45. Tommy, who are you?
My name's Tom Roberts. I'm the superintendent for the Midcoast Region. I've been the superintendent for seven years, been with DOT for 21 years.
I got you.
We, I live in Pittston, so I'm not too far away. But I can tell you, a few years ago, Pittston threw some payment at a dirt road. Didn't do a whole lot of prep work before and this year, two years later, the road is going back to dirt because it's, it's just almost rubble and spall.
So several issues that have been discussed yet tonight, I, I deal with all the time and have been for years. I started working with Herb back in the late 80s when he was here and, and went to his retirement party and he came to a lot of our training and I haven't seen her for a while, but if you see him, say, tell him I said hi. But we actually ran a grader training program out here in the late 80s where we took your grader, which probably, Nate might still be the one we, how old is it?
It's a 91.
Okay, so you didn't have it at the time.
It's all right. It's a new grader.
Yeah. So, um, I, I have dealt with all these issues here all the time. Uh, this town is no different than lots and lots of other towns, do the exact same issues. Uh, as, as Tommy said, do not just pave a road to get rid of the mud. You're, don't do that, because that's the wrong thing to do. You need to fix the road first. Fix the drainage, fix the base, bring in good gravel, maybe put some geotextile down, do it right, and then pave it. Because I see this all the time too. Towns, uh, in fact, I had a couple this week calling me and said, yeah, this mud is wicked right now. I don't know how many calls I get a day. People are dealing with mud all over the place. Not just Maine either. And, uh, uh, they think that the best thing ought to be done is to pave the road and then the problem goes away. No, it's just the opposite. It's gonna fall apart. You have to have a good base. You have to have excellent drainage. You can't just, you can't just do that. Sure, it's smooth and black for a while, but it won't be long.
And that's what we did when we rebuilt the two roads that we paved, uh, a couple of years ago that were, that were dirt, that suffered serious issues. We, we did exactly that. The drainage was dealt with, the base was relayed and and, uh, so they've passed the first two winters really well.
Oh, good.
Um, so, so I'm interested on your, your, uh, uh, when you talked about, you know, rebuilding it first before you pave it, would it, would it be feasible to do the, do the base work and leave it gravel, uh, for like a year or, or so and, and then be able to go back and pave it?
Yeah, the thing is, the key to this is to make sure that you've got good gravel, which means, is it stacked out? Or do you just all good gravel from some pit around here and someone said it's good? Oh yeah, wicked good. Well, maybe it isn't. And that's what causes the problem.
Right.
A simple spec, um, talk about hiring an engineer to do this. Sure, you can do that if you wanna pay the money to engineer it, but, you know, we've helped so many towns just put together a simple little spec. I can do it in one page for you if you really wanted to, for free. Um, do whatever you want to, but, um, it doesn't take much to really show a basic cross-section of what you want. What do you want to do to the base? Sure. So, uh, without seeing it's kind of hard to tell and every road is different. But, um, you probably want to excavate some of the junky stuff that's there now. Fix the drainage, uh, make sure the cullets are there, make sure you've actually got ditches. Uh, put some geotextile down, the right geotextile, not the wrong stuff. And then put a good foot and a half, depends on what's being used out there. As, as a road gets a lot of trucks.
Yeah, I think it will get
Yeah.
more once it's tarred.
Okay, uh, so you might wanna go to a little thicker than that, just for support purposes and then pave it with at least three inches. But like you said, that will now become a runway for lots of people and it'll become the easy route to go and speed limit will increase, uh, the speed will increase and everyone wants to drive on a paved road. But, um, uh, Tim, what you said about the cost benefit of pay versus gravel, uh, every road is different and some towns, that is the way to go is to pave it. But there's lots of factors that go into that. In fact, I remember the town of Richmond did this back nineteen ninety. In fact, it's still on my website. You could look at the same thing and see how they did that economic, uh, little study they did in the town office and looked at your cost to use the town grader, town labor, town equipment, town gravel versus, um, paving. And then having to deal with pavement repair and overlays how many years from now? You gotta do that cost comparison and sometimes it comes out much, much more beneficial just to leave it paved. And as long as it's built right and there's good drainage and there's no mud or dust in the summer, that should be a very low maintenance road that Dan doesn't have to spend a lot of time on. And that is the best economic bang for the buck right there.
Still leave it dirt.
Dan, just the fact that you said this stuff was sticky, that tells me there's lots of fines in there. And if we were to test it, it's probably got ten, twenty percent fines, which is wicked high. You don't want that. That's what's creating the, the mud and it will turn to dust come summertime. It will just be clouds of dust.
Yeah.
Well, you've got way too many fines there. You need to get that knocked down and bring in the right gravel. So it can be done right and you can get rid of it. I've seen town after town get rid of mud, so to speak. Because you do it right, you fix it, fix the drainage, use the right gravel and you make sure it's crowned. I was on a couple the other day. Uh, you know, when these roads get fixed or graded, is there any crown put on the road? Or is it just smoothed out to get rid of the potholes and make phone calls go away? Does it have a crown? Did anyone check it?
It's not crowned.
Well, it should, because that's where the water's gonna send. Um, Dan, I don't know if you have, but we've got a simple gauge you can put right on the front of the grader. It's zero, one, two, three, four, five percent. And on a gravel road, you should be getting, uh, two percent. And all you have to do is, is put that on the grader and make sure it's on two all the time. And now you've got a good crown. I sell them for forty bucks, but I'll give you one just because I'm here tonight.
I will say if I do my best, once it's dried out to, to get some pitch in the road.
Yeah.
To help.
Yeah.
But it's, it's gonna be a temporary.
Obviously, after a winter season, you plow on the road, you're taking the crown off it anyway. And the water just sits there. So that's, that's your worst enemy, you know? If, if you listen to anybody that knows anything about roads, they're gonna tell you the three most important things when it comes to roads is drainage, drainage and drainage. That's, you gotta focus on that, because that's causing most of your problems.
A lot of, a lot of shaded areas.
Issues too. Well, that shade.
I don't know what it looks like either.
Yeah, the shade, the, the thing is, it's, it's, uh, the area they're talking about swampy anyway.
Is it a northwest road or a north-south road?
It's a north-south road.
Doesn't get a lot of sun?
I mean, uh, yeah, it doesn't get a lot of sun. So, well, is this something that Dan could work with you to try to get some, some help on?
Yeah.
On how the, the rebuild portion, portion of it could be done and maybe get some cost estimates?
Yeah.
Could, could we have just one conversation, please? It's too much.
We've got a fellow called a road ranger. Um, in fact, it used to be Phil Curtis, some of you might remember Phil. Uh, Phil retired with us unfortunately a few years ago. Um, he still runs all the unorganized roads up in Somerset County. But we have another fellow, Paul Brown. Um, he's not quite, uh, ready to come back. He came down with COVID uh, last October and he almost died. He was this close to dying. And he is still recovering and trying to learn how to walk and ride again. Uh, but as soon as he gets back, um, he's my main guy that would come out and help you. In the meantime, I'll just come out myself and, Dan, we can go out, we can work something out. Give you a pretty good idea of what you need to do.
Now, how, how soon do you think we could have an idea of what it would cost to do that rebuild work to, to get it to a, a serviceable gravel?
So what I can do is I can work with Dan on, well, we need to go out and look at the thing. And I can give you an idea of, of what sort of volumes and quantities you need of things. I don't know what you're paying for stuff. I don't know where you would get your good gravel. I can give you specs for that stuff. Um, and then you guys can work up the costs, uh, as long as I give you the numbers and showing you how to calculate stuff and you know, if you want to put a foot of gravel down or two feet of gravel, we can figure that all out for you.
And you'd also give them some, some, um, you know, what would need to be done for ditching and
Yeah.
and, uh, the, the.
We, we, we give you a, a, a rather standard cross-section, uh, just like you'd get from someone else. And this is what cross-section ought to look like. And then when you put this out to bid, this is what we want to be built. We, we tell the contractor exactly how this thing is gonna be done, with what material.
And this is something, we wouldn't be able to get this all back in time to put it on this year's warrant, but hopefully we could get, uh, enough, uh, get it, get a plan put together so that there are some things that their town road crew could do that, so we could maybe increase the public works budget so the town road crew could do some of this basic work to really take care of the bad spots. That's something that would be feasible to do.
Yeah. When's, when's, uh, when's town meeting?
We don't have seven. We don't have one. They do it by referendum, so we're really up against the clock with posting it. We need sixty days, because we it's the
Second, uh, Tuesday of June is when the vote happens.
They have to sign the warrant next, their next meeting.
Yeah.
For the sixty days.
I can probably find time in the next couple of weeks, Conan, and take care of it.
But we may have valid.
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, I, I really think, my opinion is that we, we should think about finding a way to put some extra money into public work so that once they've done their work and, and then if there's something we can do, because even, even if we said we're gonna completely rebuild it, pave it, we want to get a bond and even if the voters pass the bond, two years before your road gets touched, minimum. So if, if these two gentlemen can work together and come up with something that'll address the worst areas and fix them right so that we don't have to go back and fix them again, then you get a, a really quick fix to the worst areas and we start laying the base uh, for the rest of the work that needs to be done. It'll cost less money when we are able to to, uh, put, put it out for a vote and, and appro, and get approval to appropriate the money to do the whole thing, right? Does that sound reasonable?
Start, start, basically start proceeding, but don't get anything till two years.
Well, you, we can't even guarantee that, because the voters have to approve whatever appropriation we, we'd come up with. But what I'm saying is that with this approach, and if we put enough extra money into the public works budget and that gets approved, then, then Dan's crew could go in and do, do some of that, address the, the worst areas on the road. Build them to the spec that they, that they, you know, come up with, it needs to be built by to, before you pave it and to make it a solid, you know, dependable dirt surface road. And, uh,
This year.
Yeah, gravel, gravel, you're right, dirt, gravel, gravel road. Imperious surface road.
To have your opinion about whether or not this road is something that you'd even recommend putting pavement on because of
Yeah, it sounds like as is, uh, without even seeing it. I think my answer is a quick no. You, you really need to fix this road, because there's nothing there.
Yeah, but not, you know, fix it with, you know, the right media, putting the right, you know.
You can do it.
Material there. And as we know, when you let something compact over a winter, you have a little more stable base. You know, before you
I have all these people calling lately about their mud problems on these roads and it's sad to listen to, because
I would like to just open my windows at least once.
Right, just health issues, elderly people, disabled folks and so on. It's, it's really sad.
Well, we really appreciate you working with Dan to help us with this one.
That's what I've been doing for thirty-seven years, so.
You know, the other, the other, uh, silver lining to that is that gravel is an asphalt.
Yeah.
Brisk asphalt is up these days and if we're dealing with gravel, maybe it's not so much.
Yeah.
Mine's bigger amounts a lot of times.
Vermont has a lot of, of gravel
Yeah.
roads that don't rut up in the springtime because they're built right.
Yeah. Pieces of road that may have been good in the past and they turned to junk in the last week or so. And vice versa. Things that were junk last year are all, all set and then another piece has gone to hell. Very true.
So, um, as we talked about at the beginning of the meeting for our, um, girl that does the minutes, if you say who you are for her to be able to, you know, put the notes in.
Oh, I'm Dawn Woodman.
Okay.
I'm Jamie.
Okay, just so she'll know when she's doing the minutes. That helps her out tremendously when we have public comments.
She listens to the video from home, so obviously she's not here, so she can't figure it out.
Yep.
So you guys probably better work together and do something. Yes, thank you.
I, I'm a municipal official myself in Randolph and I, I wear about thirteen municipal hats in six other towns. So I get it. And I, I'm a real close friend to your code enforcement officer, Matt Drost. Uh, he, he's selectman in Randolph, uh, which is salt priority. And, uh, I work with him now at DOT. And I should be with him right now playing trivia at the Batto Brewing in Gardner, but I'm over here.
And we appreciate you being here. We ready?
Yeah, we're ready. Actually, I have, I have one, one quick report, two sentences probably. Just, uh, there was a meeting of the Economic Development Committee. Uh, we're off to a pretty good start. We're probably gonna be making some recommendations to the select board about modifying uh, and updating our TIF district and perhaps even our TIF district map. So some ideas are floating around, stay tuned.
You understand, none of that can be done without voter approval.
I understand.
Okay, so on to, uh, public comment. Any public comments? Here, does anybody have a comment out there?
No.
Yeah. Then on to, uh, article number, uh, item number six. It's a discussion of the salt priority with Mr. Coughlin and Mr. Roberts. And Mr. Molicle.
Okay, so thanks, thanks for the invite. Uh, this kind of started when I was out here, what, two months ago, Justin?
Yeah.
Asked me to come out and, uh, you, you're thinking about putting up a sand salt building? Again, because I remember being out here with Herb, I don't know how many years ago, doing the exact same thing. And I got put off and it looks like you guys have got some interest in putting up a building, which is great. Um, so we spent some time going through all the pros and cons of all kinds of different buildings and I gave them all kinds of info and costs and all that stuff. But what that does is relate directly to what size building, which relates directly to what are your inter, what are your winter operations like? So you guys have got, uh, like sixty-something sixty-four miles of winter plowing? And it's, and it sounds like you still put up, uh, Dan, let me ask, how many yards of sand and salt do you go through in a year for sixty-four miles?
We put up thirty-four hundred yards this past fall and we had a reserve of roughly twenty-five hundred already sitting there. And at this point, we're at over four thousand yards of sand this year.
Okay. So if you're gonna build a building to continue the same old, same old, which to me I call sand priority mode, which is old-fashioned, uh, you're gonna spend, you know, to house that sort of volume, you're looking at easily six, seven hundred thousand dollars for building. They've gone up quite a bit. Uh, if you've done this ten years ago, twenty years ago, it'd be a heck of a lot less.
Three hundred thousand is what Herb quoted us about fifteen years ago.
Yeah, so double it. Yeah. And that's just a cold storage building with some electric lights in it and a door and a fan. That's about it. You can do that if you want, but it's the fact that we're here tonight, it sounds like there has been some, some discussions since Justin and I talked that night and there may be some interest in kind of modernizing your operations here so that you go more toward a, uh, salt focus and less of sand. Which means instead of putting up a, a five-thousand-yard building, you're gonna put up something that's gonna house a couple hundred ton. Or more, for a whole lot less money. I got a bunch of stuff I can drop with you tonight and I don't know how long you want to talk about this, but the bottom line is, um, you know, DOT has been doing self-priority for, since nineteen ninety.
Before I came on.
DOT used to put up statewide, half a million cubic yards of sand statewide. Now they put up about thirty or forty thousand. They still use it on occasion when you have to, because weather conditions might dictate that. But when you modernize your operations and you stick toward a calibrated, measured amount of salt, the bottom line is you're gonna have much clearer roads, much cleaner roads, much safer roads for less money. So why wouldn't you want to do this? Um, one of the big things I've found in doing this for so many years, it's skepticism and the human factor. Because people are afraid of doing something different. It's safe to continue putting lots of sand down and making it brown. Because that's the way we always done it. But there's a better way to do things. And there's lots of towns, I mean, DOT is one example, statewide. Where costs have dropped dramatically. You could be like lots of other towns, including my old town of Randolph, to go to salt priority and do it very successfully. By the way, before I forget, you can't do that on gravel roads, because you don't want to put You can't do that on gravel roads because you don't want to put salt on gravel. That's not good. But if you can stick to paved roads, um, and you, you might experiment. I mean, we're more than willing to come out, if you're willing to come out. Uh, Paul Brown, once he gets better, he'd be wanting to come up and help look at your equipment, help you calibrate things, help you set it up, tell you what you need. If anything new for equipment, all kind of depends on what you got. If you've got old stuff and now you've got a brand new truck coming in. Um, we can help you with that if you want. Free advice. Uh, in Randolph, we've been doing this. Randolph's the smallest town in the state of Maine by area, two square miles. We've got about seven and a half miles of road. And we went to salt priority five years ago. Our contract price went down. Our roads are clean by the time. By the noon of the next day when the storm ends. We have no sand. We still have a sweeping contract, but it takes care of it like a half a day. We don't, there's no sand to pick up. It's all about timing and calibration and getting. Getting people to think differently and being open to trying something different. And that's where the biggest challenge is because there's a lot of skepticism when it comes to this business and doing something different. But I don't know how many times and Tommy, you, I'd be curious too, from young guys and gals. I don't know how many times I've heard municipal public works guys, type guys like Dan. That finally switch over, dare to try something different and, and do it. And they say pretty quickly, why didn't we do this before? The skepticism is up this high, but once you try it and you see that it actually works and you can go home earlier. There's less time and effort. You don't have to put up four thousand yards of sand. What's the time and cost and wear and tear on all your equipment to put up four thousand yards of sand? That goes into the cost of a yard of sand. What do you pay for sand, Dan, for a cubic yard? To someone.
I think the price was eight.
Eight. Then add in all the extra costs involved with that. Putting it up, storing it, loading it, dealing with the wear and tear on equipment. And then this time of year, eventually, uh, you're going to have to clean out ditches, catch basins, culverts. We don't deal with that anymore. So what's the full cost of a yard of sand? Uh, really, it's not just eight bucks. It's a lot more than that. And that's, that's where your cost savings can come in and you can end up with a much better operation. Um, in our, I'll, I'll leave your, a copy of Randolph's contract here. But we wrote it for our, we don't have, we don't have any equipment. We're not as fortunate as Monmouth where we've got. A crew and a garage. We don't have any of that stuff. We totally contract the whole thing. And our contract is for three years and we decided that uh, we were so serious about this. There is a two thousand dollar penalty. If the contractor uses sand in our town without permission in a given storm, we're going to hit them with a two thousand dollar penalty. That hasn't happened yet. Because there were a couple of times this winter where sand was needed because of the weather conditions and the pavement temps and so on. And he just called the selectmen and they said, sure. So he puts them down, but it's right here. It's, you're going to get. You're going to get a two thousand dollar deduction from the next payment if you use sand. And we've been doing it for five years. We've got some of the best roads in town around the area. I, I, just the other day, I was over the City Garden. And those guys have been using sand, sand and sand forever. And uh, two years ago, they decided to go to salt priority. All of the guys, and they're all usually nice, were all skeptical. It's like, no way, this is not a work. We don't want to do this. We're comfortable with what we're doing. And so they went to salt priority. And now those guys, if you talk to them today, which I did yesterday, they'd say, hey, speak. I don't know why we didn't do this before. There's no way we would go back to using all that sand. It's just, no way. It's just. We, it's so much better now and our roads are so much cleaner. Even the hills in town, coming down, coming down the hill into town there. If you do it right, you don't have to deal with sand. Why wouldn't you want to do that?
Yeah, there's no sun on that two oh one hill coming down into town either.
You're right, right.
I, our, our guys are the same way. It was the same way when we first went over. They didn't want to do it, didn't want to do it. Now if I call my guys, I call the crew and say, hey, you know, with temperatures, there are times when we still use sand. It's like I take all the toys away when I tell them to put the salt. Because they just know it's going to be longer, it's going to be dragged out, it's going to take way longer to get the roads cleaned up. And you know, the big thing too is, is the cleanup, you have to clean it up. There's some roads that we ditch as DOT. That the towns, different towns plow, one's not too far from you. We could ditch it every year with the amount of sand they put down there. The road is constantly in bad shape. Because of the amount of sand that they put out and we have to constantly chase it. I'd much rather spend that money on something else, doing something else, paving a road or cutting down some more trees on some roads that desperately needed or changing some culverts or putting some bridge work. I'd rather spend it on something else to clean it up.
So the key to all this is to get out early.
Peter, I had a question about, uh, we got an, an article from the main town.
This old article in here that you were part of and Sean and it's from the main town, it's been from.
How old is it?
Two thousand four.
Oh, I've done one earlier than that.
And uh, it, it, it.
I can give it to you if you want to.
Oh, I think I know it's, this was like discussed solely versus mileage.
The quotes of, uh, Public Works from a guy from Prescott Isle, uh, Brunswick and Scowhegan.
Yep.
And uh, well, I know in the Scowhegan case, the, uh, they apparently only use the, the salt priority. In the city, but on rural roads says they sand.
Yeah.
So.
Good to know.
Would that, would that apply to, what Monmouth has very kind of small municipal area or?
Town area.
You've got quite a, you know, town of Monmouth is, is pretty large geographically and your roads are spread all over the place. And I don't know where, out of all the roads on here, out of sixty-four miles, how many of those still are gravel?
Nine miles.
Nine out of sixty-four? And are they kind of like in every corner?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so you, you may have to have, because you don't want to put salt on the gravel. You may have to have a truck that just paves and, and sands. And, you know, a snowpack on gravel roads, which is fine. When it comes to gravel roads, um. You know, some towns just do it in the city, some towns uh, do the whole town. Uh, I know one thing that people are always skeptical about. In fact, it might be in that article. Where uh, some of these selectmen in other towns were saying, no, that doesn't work here. We don't have the traffic the DOT has on its roads. Well, I could tell you Randolph is pretty much made up of dead end roads that are a couple hundred feet long. And there's no traffic on.
He's not on it.
And we have, we literally, and, and by the way, here's another important thing, as you'll see in our contract. We took our little town and prioritized and gave roads priority one, two and three. Just like the state does, has five categories. We took in Randolph and said, okay, Kendock Street. Barbara Road, Birmingham Road are going to be priority one. We want you to be out there frequently. We want you to keep plowing. We want you to keep salt at a certain rate out there. Whereas some of the priority threes of the little subdivision, dead end things with three houses on. Uh, you can back off the frequency of plowing there. You just don't have to do so much. But I tell you, just driving around town after storms, um, especially if the sun comes out. Um, we have bare roads everywhere within twenty-four hours. So, and it's not because of tra- it's not traffic. It's because the salt got put out early. It created a brine. It prevented sticking to the road. Because that's what's going to be your cost, is trying to cut this stuff off the road. You don't want to do that. You want to prevent it from packing on the road, which means you've got to get out early at the beginning of the storm. A lot of the old contracts that towns use, used to say, uh, plowing and sanding shall commence after two inches of snow has come down. That's too late. You've got to get out there right at the beginning and prevent the pack.
That's what the turnpike does.
Yes.
Yeah, and they use, they use a lot of salt. And you know, you could, if you wanted, well, the other thing here is level of service. What? What level of service do the people of Monmouth Fane as taxpayers expect from the town relative to. Uh, conditions after storm? Do they basically want to see bare pavement within a day or two? Or are they happy with snowpack on the roads all winter? I think I know what the answer is. If that's the case, then you can attain that and your level of service is going to come up and you're going to have to, um. You could use salt on, to do this. One other main thing before I forget. Is some people are concerned about the environmental possible impact of salt. One thing that you should not think. Is going to happen here if you decide to switch. When not. Same amount of salt as you do now with sand that's kind of winding off the back of the spinner and you're trying to cover the whole road. That is not what you're going to do with salt. Salt is going to be, if you put in a windrow or a smaller area. And that's going to be used to eventually, the, the traffic will, will heal it up and that's what's going to create. Um, bare pavement eventually. Your greatest tool in snow and ice control is the plow. It's not the chemicals. It's the plow. So you have to keep plowing and keep the stuff off and treat it maybe on occasion. But the bottom line is, the amount of salt you use now with four thousand yards of sand. You could probably use no sand and use the same amount or a little bit more salt than what you're doing right now. So people are concerned about, oh God, there's going to be ten times as much salt out there in the environment now if we go to this. If that's the case, you guys are doing it wrong. If, someone needs to go to have some schooling here because it's not, that's just not the, the way to do it. Um, we, I, I'll give you information here tonight. Um, we'll help you calibrate trucks if needed. Is that new truck coming in with any computer controls?
No, we, we have, I don't remember what it was spec with, but I don't believe it has anything to solve priority.
Okay. It wouldn't, so people ask, what's, what's the equipment cost to switch over? You want to say anything about that, Tom? Like, what do you guys have on trucks?
We have a few different systems. We have some older ones that have been in there forever, copy sprint systems. We have some. Serious systems that are more computerized now that are a lot better at measuring, showing how much we're using and putting it out more accurately, but. HP Fairfield has access to all of that stuff. I don't know who you have building your truck, but.
This one's there.
HP Fairfield, yeah. That's who builds all ours and they have access to all of that equipment there. We've been up there to meet with the reps, different reps that they have for different systems as well. They're great to work with this stuff.
And you use plastic spinners, right?
Uh, not everywhere.
Not everywhere?
No, some of the trucks are, some of them are.
Listen, so don't think that it's going to cost thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars for what you're. That doesn't have to be the case. You, we, you know, we could come out here and we could probably see what you got, work with you. And say, well, you really ought to do this, you really ought to do that. You could get ground speed control, that would help a lot. Just to calibrate the truck so you don't know how much salt's coming off the back end will be a big deal. In fact, uh, we'll come out and help you do the, we'll do the calibration for you. But if you keep this in the cab, this would tell you in a given uh, storm condition, that you ought to be putting down maybe two hundred pounds per lane mile. Well, what does that mean as far as the dial in your trunk? Well, you'll have that right with you. Every driver would have that. If you had a computer system, the computer's going to do it for you and it will control what's coming off the back end. Without a computer system, you're relying on humans and the tailgate and maybe the chain that's rusted shut or. What the gate's rusted or whatever it is, that's much less control.
So, yeah, Pete mentioned the buildings, you guys are looking at buildings. We are replacing some of our giant thirty-five hundred, four thousand yard buildings and we're putting back six hundred yard buildings. Not giant domes like we've been doing. No, we're not doing that for our Fairfield crew that has eleven plow trucks out of there that plows, you know, a lot of mileage, but. For our average crew that's five or six plow routes. Right around the same sixty, seventy miles, a six hundred works. We fill it up every couple of weeks if we're using it. Just to avoid shipping issues and stuff. And you saw a bunch of the issues this year with uh, salt. Not, you know, we get it. We do things a little bit different, so.
What kind of, what kind of structures?
The one that we have, uh, we just built one in our, in Randolph, actually for Randolph Garage, uh, concrete walls. They're about eight feet tall. It's paved on the inside. The floor is paved and then it's just, it's, it's metal after that. It's wood structure with metal. And there's a lean-to on the side for our calcium tank as well. Similar to that, yeah.
Oh, Peter, with the, the, on the, in that article, Ken, uh, South Portland. Mentions uh, that they use something that's, I don't know if it's better for the environment called Ice Begone.
Yep.
Is that?
You, you could. That's just an additive that you might want to use for when it gets really, really cold out because this is all about salt. I mean, people complain against the state and the state's using all this, this uh, liquid stuff and it's corroded my car and the brake lines. It's salt, nothing else. Tommy, do you use any, anything like Ice Begone or Magic Minus Zero?
We use Magic Minus Zero. It's mixed with Salvarin. And it's, it's basically used to activate the salt a little bit quicker and so it doesn't scatter as much to. To keep it in the wheel tracks where you want it, not on the side of the road, on the shoulder of the road, keeps it in the road. But we have that, we have that, uh. We make our own. We get the, the Magic Minus Zero and then we have a unit in Fairfield, actually that ones that we ship around.
The whole thing on the pack I'm going to leave you here that kind of shows the bounce and scatter effect, that if you just drop it out there dry. Um, it's going to blow off like all your sand does now. I mean, just driving around town, you know, see, maybe not so much now, but. Uh, all the roads that have sand on them left over for the winter, what do you see? You see wheel paths. And all this useless sand under your middle car and on the sides. How much did it cost to put that there if you just sit there? Versus if you had gone salt, it's done its job and it. Much cheaper. What, what the brine does, and if you pre-wet, it'll stick to the road. It won't blow off. It's much cheaper. And it keeps that brine going in the roadway so it doesn't create snowpack.
Basically sprays on the salt as it hits the spinner, right off the spinner. So it's spraying as it hits the spinner.
So this, this little booklet I'll leave you, I don't know if you've got one here or not, but. Uh, this was done a few years ago. This is uh, best management practices for snow and ice control with an environmental focus. Uh, this triangle on the front, snow and ice control is about the cost. And providing safety and public service, uh, and reducing accidents and the impact on the environment. This manual was all about the environmental impact and what better, best, better management practices are. Relative to everything we've just talked about here, whether it's equipment or using sand or using salt. Or liquids or the plow blade or whatever it is, calibration. We, we, we did this, this was with the University of Maine, DEP, the Turnpike Authority, uh, the Greater Poland. Uh, the Casco, Casco Bay Estuary Program because all the towns down in Greater Poland have to report. The impacts of uh, salt and chlorides as MS four towns. You don't have to do that here. Um, but this is a great little booklet that talks about the environmental impact.
So that's a good segue. Bill, Bill Monaco from the Gopsy Watershed District is here. Bill, what's your opinion on the environmental impact of? Less sand, almost no sand and maybe a little bit more salt?
Well, it sounds like from what Peter said, it may not be any more salt.
Yeah.
It could be about the same. Uh, uh, I mean, I've been asked this question. Right, fifteen, twenty years ago when Cornell night started and went from back then about calc- putting calcium chloride down.
Yeah.
And I called the DEP and uh, they had too much of a concern with it at the time. And I do know is that there's some concern in Southern Maine, York County, Cumberland County of some salt and mostly, I think, streams and that.
Yeah.
Uh, area too. Yeah, I've done some research on, uh, you know, the, the impact of chlorides on lake water quality, particularly zoe plankton macroinvertebrates. It could have an impact and their, the concentrations they're talking about are four hundred milligrams per liter, um. And it's very hard for me to put that into context here because Maine doesn't, you know, you look at Maine, uh, lakes of Maine, your website. Typically Maine does not measure chloride content in lakes, so I don't know what to compare that to. Um, I do know from working in the past in Massachusetts and consulting, we used to do chloride measurements down there. Because a lot of these, uh, a, a lot of areas down there, you're going through aquifer areas and they try to keep salt level. Because a lot of these uh, a lot of areas down there, you're going through aquifer areas and they try to keep salt low. Um you know, lakes typically are twenty, thirty milligrams per liter. Uh my guess is, and and I spoke with Jeff Dennis, and after I thought of Jeff Dennis at D P. I thought of touch base with him and ask him um uh what his take was because I saw an article in the. Portland uh press a couple of weeks ago, uh Wendy Garland at D P was uh um uh. Um quoted in more or less the same, she had concern about streams and and small streams in that down that area. People in New Hampshire are concerned about lakes. I asked Jeff Dennis and he said that, and he, and he, he mentioned Peter and he, he's probably heard your spiel, Peter. He's probably, you know, I mean, your whole, your calculations and everything. And Jeff pretty much assured me that what Peter would be prescribing here. He does not consider to be um anything that would be a a risk to to lake water quality here. Um the only thing that, I mean, I was thinking, uh I mean, these roads, like you've got sixty-four miles and it's it's spread all around and there's. Stream crossings and the lakes are pretty big relative to probably the the surface area of the, that are going to be treated here. So it's uh. It doesn't dilute all that well because it's pretty conservative ion. It doesn't really disappear. Chloride goes through soil, groundwater and everything else and it pretty much sticks around. But um I was just thinking about some areas that I think I would be concerned about if it was, if there was going to be heavy application that are large. Uh areas. Uh and and one that came to mind was the public boat launch site in a large parking lot on Cobbsey Lake. And I'm not thinking about a lake-wide impact, but I'm thinking about localized impacts. So that cove right there, there's a heron. With a lot of herons hang out down in that cove down there, right at the base of the, of the parking lot, the ramp there. And I'm just thinking about, you know. Um would that possibly have a localized impact? But if the town was currently sanding with salt. Essentially, they probably wouldn't be putting down any more salt than what they are now.
Well, actually, we wouldn't be doing it there anyway because you got to cover dirt road to get there. So we wouldn't be using.
Okay, well, I didn't even know even if if there was any sanding even going on. I mean, I go down there sometimes in the wintertime, but I don't really pay attention. To whether it's been sanded. I know it's plowed regularly by the time down there.
We, it's sand, sand only, sand only, and we, we typically. Will turn around in the lower parking lot. We don't actually try and maintain the whole parking lot. Don't get, just try and stay away from that. Get down too far. But it's sand only, sand on the dirt road and and sand in the parking lot.
So Bill, I'm not hearing you being terribly concerned about the salt issue. Is the, is the, the reduction in. The application of sand actually a silver lining when it comes to sediment that ultimately ends up in streams?
Um I, I don't know, I don't know uh uh how mobile the sand will be unless it's really close by and on steep slopes. I mean, it's. Probably going to blend into the native soils, get stuck in a ditch and maybe be removed when you clean ditches or or something like that. But I don't know how attractive. Uh sand is, um it might move a little bit. You know, it it doesn't tend to have a lot of uh fines to it. And sand, whatever phosphorus is in sand is probably not. Uh bioavailable, it's in a mineral form like appetite. So it's probably not like a silt. Or something where it's a little more uh available for um uh algae in lakes, phytoplankton, so. Um no, I mean, I think uh as a driver on these roads, I just know that when, when there's ice out there. Um once the ice is formed, I like to have that sand out here when I'm driving. It's uh. Um it takes a while for, you know, if you put salt down on a, on a inch or half inch of ice, it could take a while though. Note that, especially if it's cold, below twenty degrees.
Then the goal is to not let that.
That's right.
It is a battle.
Right, you got to get out there before.
Right, it doesn't matter salt, the same order, once you've got that much, you've got some issues.
Well, when it's, when it's an ice storm, it's freezing rain, you're going to throw so- uh sand anyway.
We don't.
No?
No, because when it's just below thirty-two, that's when salt works best. Light applications.
Right, it doesn't need to be large applications. It needs to be small applications and you need to to keep on it.
That's what this little chart tells you.
The only time we use sand is if it's both, if it's around zero during all the storms, is the only time that we use sand. The only other time we might use it if we have an area that's cleaned off and it's real windy and we had some powdered snow, we wouldn't use salt to make it stick. We'd put some sand there so it'd keep blowing off, but there'd be some traction. So very, very rarely do you use that.
Okay, so in the stack at this little thing in here on the pros and cons of sand on roads. And uh it basically says, it doesn't do much for you. In fact, for every category of road in here, it says, sand is inappropriate. So, you know, that's, that goes a long ways.
Yeah.
Um there have been several studies done. You can Google this if you want, but there's several studies that talk about the environmental impact of sand. On invertebrates and and the environment. Um you know, it can be significant.
Yep, well, I've got a paper here from Freshwater Bi- Journal of Freshwater Biology, just came out. Two thousand nineteen, a review of the species, community and ecosystem impacts of road, salt, salinization and fresh waters and. I I suppose, you know, we could be talking apples and oranges. I mean, this could be. Water resources close to large, huge urban areas. I mean, I grew up in Milwaukee in the city.
Right.
I never saw sand. Sand would clog up all your storm sewers. Everything was salt. And your car is paid the price for it because everything on, you know, barely had anybody left on the vehicles there, but um. Um so, no, it's uh like I say, it's like um. Uh I don't see this as anything that's going to cause. E- especially because when I spoke to Jeff Dennis, who just last week celebrated his fiftieth anniversary working for D P in the Lakes Division. So um I don't, I don't think he's too old to be able to make a good judgment call on this, but uh uh no.
So, well, this is exactly why I asked Justin if he could get, get you guys down here to talk to us so he had some, you know, an informed. Uh we could make an informed decision and and uh this has been great.
So I could tell you about two months ago, Tommy and I went to talk with the board of selectmen in Rashan Farmingdale. Because they were second tied, and you can see it right now, the side roads look like gravel roads. There's pavement under there. And they wanted to do something different. They look across the river of what we do and say, why can't we be like Randall? You know, why do we need all this sand? So we went, we went and talked to them and uh. Because I do Farmingdale's website, I get all the latest. And uh the selectman uh held a public hearing on this a month ago about going from sand to salt for the winter operations. And then they rely totally on contractors too. And uh I loaded the R F P up for salt priority on their website last week. So, I'm going to do it. There's no reason why you couldn't do it. It's again, it's the fear of doing something different and the skepticism and. We've never done that before and, oh god, I don't, you know, people are going to crash all over town and.
But there's also, I mean, I I just want to chime in here. I mean, there's also the uh, the, the, the uh, the issue of the cost of construction of the storage unit and. That's your, if you're committing to a practice and you're going to price a building. If it's going to be an expensive building relatively, and it's going to be smaller than the one that you, that would. Suit your current practices and you decided after two or three years that this isn't the right way to go. You wasted that small building. If that's what I would, that's how I would look at it. I mean, it's, it's, it seems to me like you'd be making a commitment. Not just in trying something out, but also with the infrastructure, the building that that's going to accommodate that, that new practice.
It, it, has anybody that has gone to salt priority ever team that?
I have not seen that. Have you done?
Oh, Greenfield, Manchester, Withrop, the.
Manchester is the town that I told you about. I wish wouldn't go to self priority because Palm Road in Manchester is one of the worst roads in our region. As far as the amount of sand they put on that road. It is brutal and our phone constantly rings. About constantly ditching that thing. We spent two hundred thousand dollars ditching that road last year and could probably go and do it again.
So is that, did I understand that Wales has salt priority?
I believe Wales does. I think Seabreeze, I think Seabreeze plows for them and I believe they do.
There's, there's salt.
Yeah, they do.
Find which towns you have salt priority and then see what the, if there's a statistical correlation between auto accidents and.
Well, it's not auto accidents, it's uh face, it's uh, it's Facebook feedback.
Well, but I think, you know, it's been being done. Statewide for a number of years now, not only on the Turnpike and two ninety-five. But a lot of other smaller towns. So it's not like we're reinventing the wheel. It's already been, you know, going on.
One twenty-six.
Exactly.
Garden in the Wuston, seven years. I had, we ran out of salt one year and they made us use sand and uh. It wasn't real.
Well, you know, and I, and I drove two O two for thirty years to Auburn, you know, from Monmouth, so. I mean, I, I know what I was driving on and I've been driving the Turnpike for years now too. So we know what we're driving on there. Yeah, we don't have the traffic in Monmouth. But I'll tell you, anything's got to be better than some of the things that we've seen in the past few years in. With the amount of snow that's remained on the roads, so. Exactly. So I think that's the biggest thing is that it's just a change for Public Works to have a different routine. And once they know what the routine is, you know. And that's, that's the thing. So.
He's great to work.
Come and have some time to Jerry and Gardner and talk to the fellas that drive the truck over there. They'll tell you. Uh there's no reason to believe that if you guys did this and did it right. You would, I would hear the same response out here.
Yeah.
Why have we done this before?
So my, my concerns in asking to get you, get you guys here together were to find out. How much, if there was an increase in the salt load, how much that increase would be? And then find out if it was going to have a, a negative impact on a, on any of our bodies of water. And so everything I've heard is great because it says you don't really increase your salt load very much, but you almost. You, you decrease your sand load by probably eighty percent.
Well, at least.
Because we've got dirt roads, so you're still going to use some. Um and there's no negative impact to the water quality issues, so personally, I. I, I really appreciate this and I can't see any reason why we wouldn't do it.
Yes, I, I just want to go on record as, you know, as the director of Public Works and I'm new to the public works industry, but I certainly had interest in it. Which is what drew me to the position and I've paid attention to a lot of the stuff over the years. Um. So I'm not entrenched in the old ways of we've got to use sand, sand, sand. Um. I'll be honest, when I got a good look at the operations of of what we do for winter, I was a little shocked at how much sand the town. This town used and how it was done and it was, it's just the way it's been done for fifty years and. There's nothing wrong with that, but by the end of December, um I knew in my head that we needed to go in a different direction. Um I didn't expect to be tackling this in the first year, but with the culmination of a sand and salt building. A huge priority for this town to move forward in any direction with what we're going to do. And then uh, you know. Seeing the results of salt priority and and having to make changes, it's, it was a direction that I knew. We were going to have to, I was going to present to go forward in, so um I'm ready to take the challenge on and go forward with it. Uh and and see what the results are, so.
So what you could do, Dan, is maybe, you know, if you, if you guys wanted to put some money aside for a building that you're not going to build this year, but maybe next year. Get next year winter under your belt and dare to try. And, you know, we can help you. Jerry can help you. We can get people to come out and help you and give you some advice on what you ought to do. And then uh try it next winter and I think you'll see a quite a difference right off. And if you convince yourself, that'll answer how big a building you have to build, how small a building you have to build.
I'd be more than happy to show you around any of the buildings that we've built for the last few years.
So we, we, I mean, we couldn't get a building done by this winter anyway, so we don't have to do that to go to this. We can do what we, we, we have existing. Use our existing infrastructure to go to salt priority and then, like you say, after that first winter, we, we know exactly what we need to build for a building.
Right. And we can help, like one of the questions I had last week when I was down on the Blue Hill Peninsula. Uh and I remember driving down there, it was just like a gravel carpet on the paved roads going down there. First thing I told them in the meeting was. Oh my god, the, the amount of sand on these roads is unbelievable. And I got them thinking about this too and um. Now, this, this is down on the Blue Hill Peninsula, which is very environmentally beautiful and sensitive and so on. Yeah, they're interested in doing this and want us to come down and talk to them too. Um one other quick thing is, uh the University of Maine, twelve years ago, did a big study. On salt in Maine and its impact on roads relative to uh traffic accidents and safety. Uh environmental impact and cost. And I'll leave these here, uh the, the key findings and the policy recommendations. Are right here on, on two-page thing. And because it was twelve years ago. They are just about finishing up their latest study of the same thing here in Maine. Um and that should be out with sometime this year. And it's probably going to come up with similar recommendations. Uh use best management practices. Uh the corrosion thing is, you know, it's not like you're using lots and lots more salt. It goes back to what our cars are made of these days, what they're not made of anymore. You know, how many of us remember years ago when we bought a car, first thing you did, went to Rusty Jones, you had it undercoated or something? But now they make cars differently, the materials are different. Uh you know, they can't just blame the road. It's that stuff over the town or the state's putting on the roads. It's salt. But uh it's, it's a different way cars are manufactured these days.
If you have a, uh some kind of a structure to put the vehicle in, outs.
That.
Then, then you, you look underneath it, it's all white because all that salt came off the vehicle and it's not sitting there chewing at it.
Oh, Paul, you had something to say?
Yeah, Paul. How did, the town, of course, has put on, has put in and will be putting in a lot of concrete curbs. How's the salt affect concrete curves? It is, it's, I don't know, because it's, concrete's going to absorb the moisture and it's going to absorb the salt and salt. My understanding of it is not good, so.
It's certainly not going to help it, um but. We have concrete bridges everywhere and we have a cleaning program. We wash, we clean all the sand up. That the town, a lot of town roads, we clean sand, we clean salt, then we actually wash the bridges off. And then you can see, there's sealers that you can use. There'd be a little bit more maintenance to it. But I mean, concrete curve is not a, is not a.
You're saying there's going to be more maintenance to the.
You're going to have to take, pay some attention to the curbing.
Or we're going to wind up with in a few years, all the curves swalding and cracking and looking terrible.
Well, we're throwing the salt down now, anyway. It's just mixed with sand.
Yeah, you're already there already, so.
On new concrete like that, you should put some sealers on it. Huge different, I've worked on bridges for twelve years, so I understand concrete. How the salt affects it. And it does, I'm not going to sit here and tell you it doesn't because it does, but.
Is there a concrete curb out here?
Yeah, Academy's all concrete curb. Uh Beach Road is, like, just Maple Street's going to be. And when they get around to doing Main Street, North Main Street, it's all concrete curb.
Yeah. Sometimes you've seen these uh retaining walls that are made out of the precast uh segments.
Yeah.
Um. I don't know if there's a lot of stone in that, but if those things aren't treated, you may have, you may have noticed that some of those are susceptible also.
Same thing as having a concrete driveway, if you don't seal it.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we use a siloing on our bridges.
I, I mean, yes, you run around washing your bridges and after you look on the older bridges. You pull underneath them and after the piers and after the concrete's just falling.
Some of those bridges are a hundred years old.
Exactly.
Well, I can tell you, there are bridges that are.
Well, there are.
There's a lot of sixty, seventy-year-old bridges.
Exactly.
If Gardner just, the one that they just replaced in Gardner was a hundred years old. It was falling apart well before they ever put any.
Exactly.
If you could see what's under some of the bridges we all drive on every day. Then I expect it every two years.
Every twelve, I worked on bridges for twelve years. I can tell you, I worked in the Portland area and there was one bridge. From Route, uh Route one hundred from Falmouth into Portland. We had to go every month and bolt it back together. Because it was falling apart.
I know the Harris boys well, that's all I do is inspect bridges. So, yeah. So anyway, I, I think, think you've done a great job in helping us out on a couple of different things. Cressy Road's huge and we really appreciate, appreciate you working with Dan to help start to address that.
So I'm going to leave you a copy of the Randolph contract if you want.
That's great.
Oh, yeah. It's working five years for us. Uh or if you look at Farmingdale website, you can see their R F P is out right now. I don't know if they tweaked this or not. But there's certainly ones to go by. But it's certainly ones to go by instead of reinventingly on yourself.
Yep.
So I'm gonna leave you several materials here that, uh, including this little Snow Fighters manual. There's a lot of good practical stuff in there that relates to what we're talking about here tonight.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome.
A question for you though. What is wrong with salt on gravel roads?
It just keeps them mush.
Okay.
Yeah, it just, it
Possum.
Yeah. It, it's not good for the gravel. It, it just prolongs
You want the gravel, the surface of the gravel to freeze up. So it's a solid surface.
Yeah, I love it when it freezes. I'm a road commissioner. I hate it when it's mucky on our road. It's great when it hardens up.
Well, the wind was good the past couple of days.
Yeah, and Dan, as you know, you know, adding crushed stone is really the only thing you can do to temporarily get by right now with all that mud. But it all goes back to that old saying about if you put a hundred pounds of crushed stone to a hundred pounds of mud, what do you get? Two hundred pounds of mud.
It's the geotextile fabric, I think. When you're talking about like water coming up through, what's happening with your surface gravels going down and just becoming mud? If you wanna keep your good, what gravel you paid for, you let the water pass, but keep the gravel on the top. And, uh, geotextile fabric can also distribute the weight of traffic too to keep some of the ruts out a little. In, in low areas anyways, I find that to be good. So.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
So let me just leave a
I can make coffees if you, if you want.
Study.
Okay, thank you.
There's, uh, an article from the EPA about salt.
What host it's coming from?
Um, there's another one here that relates to a study on, uh, ice on, uh, salt on, on roads from
Thank you.
Thank you very much. If he's not back from Florida.
I don't think he's back from Florida yet. He's still open.
Alrighty.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you. Looks like trivia just ended.
You remember running into each other?
Oh, yeah.
It was a time ago.
Oh, yeah.
At O'Hare Field. You were on your way to a conference and I was on my way to Wisconsin and we both were sitting at one of those bars things. And, uh, I'm looking in the mirror and going, my God.
I don't remember that.
Yeah. Yeah, that was about fifteen, maybe twenty years ago.
Okay. All right, good. I'll, uh, I'll see Herbie on the 15th.
Would you hire your wristband?
I have no bad report.
Not yet.
Might have to bang on the table.
Yeah.
Can we get going with the meeting?
Yeah.
Oh.
We still have quite a lot on the agenda.
We got
If you wanted
We've got a long ways to go here. Uh, next on the agenda is, uh, here an update on the ARPA funding and, uh, consider the town manager spending plan.
So, as I alluded to, I think in some of my updates to you, the final rule is very flexible. It allows every, uh, small community to basically declare that you, um, were short on your revenues by ten million. You can just claim it. Whether it's, whether it's true or not, it was the way to allow the smaller jurisdictions to be able to use this money because all of the, all of the small jurisdictions across the country, mostly in New England, New York, couldn't use this money because it was very focused on water sewer infrastructure and broadband. So when they realized that there wasn't, that there weren't, weren't enough projects for rural areas, they kinda made this thing and kinda freed it up. So, so now municipalities can use it for almost anything. You, you can use it even if you wanted to, uh, which isn't, isn't something I would recommend, but just so you know how flexible it is, you could, you could pay salaries of your municipal employees if you wanted to with these funds. Clearly them being one-time monies, that's, it's not really a, a great idea.
Can we use it to fix Cressy Road?
You could use it for a, almost anything you want at this point.
So, so we, we could take some of that money and, 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 uh, put a, put a pillow in the, uh, Public Works, uh, budget so that uh, Dan could spend some money to start fixing the critical areas of that road, uh, the ARPA funds.
Yeah, it, 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 there's all kinds of ways. Basically what I did was I looked at the capital improvement plan and tried to remove as many things out of it as possible for the in-out year issue. It would try to reduce the impact on our budget going forward. So that's, that's really where I focused all of this plan here that's in front of you tonight. Um, certainly it's all up to you. Um, but these were all items that, that are gonna have to be done anyway within the next, uh, three to four years. So it was a way, that was the tack that I took in, in this presentation. Um, and I, I don't know if you have any questions about some of the
Well, I knew that the, the condenser for Compton Hall is pretty pricey and, um, having a new condenser will help in a lot of ways with um, electric research and keeping things running correctly there and upgrading that. So I think that, that's definitely I think a great priority for the hall.
The items on this plan here that, um, show the police, these are items that are, are actually currently in his operating budget for next year. So if you take it out of here, it will reduce budget by approximately that amount. The assessing stuff, as I mentioned in my memo to you, when we move, when we improve our security posture with our town network, currently the assessor is on, is on an operating system, which is, um, no longer supported, which means it doesn't get patches. It's a real security vulnerability. So I put that in here too. Basically, if we upgrade to the current version, then we can put her on a newer computer that's supported and it will be able to be patched and not, you know, have a, have a place for that. Uh, recreation. The shed, I put that in here. That's also in his operating budget. So if it, if it's, it's approved in here, it would come out of his operating budget for, for next year. Compton Hall. The fire, that transfer pump for the tanker this year, we were gonna start putting money away for three years for that. So if that was paid for, that would remove that from the capital plan. And then the town office, it was basically to, uh, do the windows, which many of them are inoperable at this point. And that was on the plan to start paying for this year too. So that's just kind of the tack that I took. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I think the assessing software
I have a question on the police component of your saying. Why does the police need AR-15? Why are we spending money on AR-15s?
You wanna answer that, Paul?
Yep. Just practice scenarios, okay? We are outgunned visitors. If we don't have the equipment to keep our officers safe out there, I'm not going to send them to, into situations, into harm's way. Say a hostage situation. We have to hold the fort down until we get the resources at the scene that we need to handle a situation properly. And it may take SP two, three hours to get their team on scene. In the meantime, we have to, we have to do what we have to do to keep the scene secure until they're able to arrive. And that's one of the tools that we need to do it.
Wow. And you currently have them, right, Paul?
I understand your concerns, Paul, but I also have a concern that you're making the choice for Monmouth, your paramilitary workforce.
I mean, I I'm making my people, I'm making my people safer.
Yeah, you feel you're making the people safer. Yet there's a report, it just came out last month, I can't read, where Maine has incited it's one of the highest states, the highest incidents civilian killing by police force. I think this is a wrong direction for the police plus the dog. How do we hold a minority of people in this state? I spent a year in combat in Vietnam. I was in between the army, active army and armor of reserve. I spent over twenty-two years in there. I instructed rifle marking for about fifteen of the twenty-two years. The AR-15 is the civilian version of the M-16, the M-16A2. I think if your officers can't secure a scene that without the AR-16 or the AR-15, I think they, they need to reassess their evaluation. I know you have a different opinion and that's your position as a chief. I respect that. But I just don't, I, I, I'm not aware, I've lived here in Monmouth for over four years, but I'm just not aware that we have any major incidences which require the police to use the AR-15.
What's the difference between getting killed with a nine-millimeter and an AR-15?
There's no difference. But I, I just think we're taking a step in the wrong direction. Like I said, I know I probably hold a very minority of people. But it's if the police, to my opinion, don't do their job in with a lot of respect to a lot of different things. I know people probably have a different thing, but you look at your police reports, it's just traffic stops and this mess. I just, I just think the town's taking a wrong direction by going this route.
Well, I will bring up the fact that there was a standoff in North Monmouth some years ago for a, for a killing. There was, uh, a meth lab on the Clark Cressy Road. There was, uh, a number of domestic abuse incidents in town, some as recently as just this past fall. So I, I, there are incidents and things that happened that are concerning.
You come back to the one in North Monmouth. I, I think that the money that you're putting there, I'd rather see you put into your training of your officers and how to deal with situations and that's what we're searching for.
And we do, we, we train them in C I D training.
Again, I, I realize I'm holding a minority opinion here, but something like that.
I appreciate where you're coming from.
But it's, uh, I, I, I just think we're going in the wrong direction. Now, enough said there. But I do have one other question that I made Justin with the ARPA fund. Is townsfolk on the ARPA funds or are they still somewhat? I know I've got to get you a request. I spoke to you briefly about the sewer.
Yep.
Um, since we last spoke, we've learned that emergency generator down here on the Covacy Road, the only one that we have not replaced is on its very last legs. It's gonna have to replace some soliciting or the district soliciting law controls also whether we can propane or diesel, but you know, i- it's easily gonna run sixty, seventy thousand dollars. So are their funds, if they have witnesses who made their request, two of them are either funding them.
They are, they are currently deciding right now how to spend, um, most of those monies because we need a warrant article that they have to approve at their next meeting. So the plan right now, as I presented it, they haven't weighed in on it at all. So I, I can't tell you how much is left, but if they were to accept all of this here, there'd be eighteen thousand dollars left.
Yeah, obviously.
That doesn't mean that's what they're gonna agree to tonight. They may agree to some other amounts for different things.
How much do you say for the generator?
The ones we replaced out in two oh two in North Monmouth, it's probably about sixty thousand, seventy thousand dollars.
Sixty or seventy?
Now we convert those from diesel to, uh, propane. Because of site constraints down here at Covacy, we'll probably want them going with diesel. We have the funds to cover in sewer, all right. It's gonna happen. But the trouble is we're gonna have to make it up and it's probably looking at a rate increase. We tried to hold off on a rate increase for several years, but it's no expense and repairs and the manholes.
So, uh, I for one, I'm in favor of, uh, of the, uh, plan that Justin's presented and I, I think the eighteen thousand dollars should be put into the public works, remaining eighteen thousand dollars.
Make a motion.
We ready for that?
Are we ready for that? Is there any other discussion?
I, I would, uh, simply weigh in and say that it seems to me like we're, um, this is one-time money and we're doing a pretty decent job of uh, matching it up with a lot of our capital expenditures, long-term assets that, uh, the town, uh, won't have to, uh, struggle paying for, for the next ten years. Um, and, you know, I, I for one, look at the, you know, hundred thousand dollar condenser that, uh, it, it comes to Hall that, uh, uh, that's gonna be a tough nut to swallow if, uh, if something goes wrong and all of a sudden we're in a tough situation where they don't have air conditioning for performances. So makes sense to me.
You don't have, have a motion, you can just do it by consensus and accept this plan because you're gonna accept warrant article questions at the next meeting anyway. If you want to.
Okay, that's, that's fine with me. Uh, but I would like to have you designate the remaining eighteen thousand to public, uh, uh, summer operations, public works.
That's agreeable, everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, I wanted to do, I, I, we skipped Bill Bogel, who wants to talk about the, uh, the budget for, uh, Covacy Watershed. And I, 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 I told him that, uh, that we, that we would have, they, I think it's a thirty-five hundred dollar increase and we would not be, there would, you know, we're not gonna we're gonna certainly accept.
But you're gonna make me work for it though, aren't you?
I don't know. But in the interest of, uh,
Time?
In the interest of time, unless there's something that really stands out.
No, no, I, I guess no, you know, it's, this is a relatively big increase we're going up this year. I mean, instead of the three, four percent and seven percent this year. And part of the reason I did want to explain is we're, we're gonna be filling a new position at Covacy Watershed. I'll be filling a position that just vacated on us, on us. And we're looking to go a little bit more in the entry level position because of our needs. Um, and also, um, this year our capital reserve expense or capital expense itself went from, is gonna go from sixteen hundred soda dollars to eleven hun- eleven thousand six hundred dollars because we need to, uh, replace our automated lake level gauge on Covacy Lake. It's in, well, it's on Welch's Point in the building that's owned by the, of Custom Water District. Yeah, we're greater utility. Yeah, and, um, and that just, it's not functioning anymore. And we need to be able to access, uh, get accurate readings of the lake level to manage water levels on all the dams. So with that, and, um, we will be forwarding this year, uh, from our own reserves to balance the budget, even with the increase in assessments, we're gonna have to transfer. I have a copy here. I have copies here. I'll just leave it. If you let me out here early, you can have a copy.
Yeah, we'll let you out early.
Okay. So we have, we have to transfer seventeen thousand dollars from our reserves to balance the budget this year. And, uh, so, uh, Does that get rid of that antiquated software and modem? Uh, that probably will, yes. And, uh, just while I'm here, because I probably won't be, I don't want to be coming back and just to let you know is that we have two big projects going, uh, regarding, uh, Monmouth lakes. We're in the second year of updating the Wilson Pond watershed based plan. We're gonna be doing a watershed survey on May twenty-first of Berry Dexter Wilson watersheds. Uh, primarily the lands around the lake and all of the roads and the watershed and working at stream crossings, et cetera. And, uh, coming up with a new plan and when that plan has to be approved by the EP and EPA, once that's done, then we will be eligible to apply for more money to do work in the Wilson Pond watershed because the old plan expired about ten or twelve years ago. And we've just, uh, started up a new ninety-four thousand dollar project on Covacy Lake, phase three. We've been doing phase one, two, and now three, and that's a two-year project. And, uh, I've got two roads, uh, in Monmouth. Uh, I've met with, uh, the Maple Ridge Island Association. We're gonna be doing We're going to be doing some work on the causeway, on Maple Ridge Island, possibly paving that. And also Frost Drive, we did a project on that two years ago and they want me to do, us to do another section of Frost Drive. So that's, you know, trying to, we're going to be working with the friends of Covacy Watershed on doing things there. And we've got a lot of other projects going on too, but I know you've got a full agenda.
I missed the last C W D meeting, but I noticed on the, on your budget, there's an increase in the N P S direct.
Yes.
What, what was that?
Okay, currently it's twenty-five hundred dollars N P S direct, which is non-point source projects. And that, these are the direct costs associated with our D E P grants. Right now, it's only twenty-five hundred dollars and most of that was to pay for, we did additional monitoring, water sampling, phosphorus, et cetera, with full depth profiles on Wilson Pond. We want to determine if Wilson Pond needs an alum treatment like Cockney-Woggin Lake did because Wilson Pond has been on a decline roughly for about twenty-five years now. And the watershed really is not that heavily developed, it's still relatively wooded and rural, but we're going to check that out. The twenty-eight thousand, six hundred in this year's budget is half of the money that I plan on spending on the new Covacy Phase Three grant. It's a two-year grant, so I budgeted twenty-eight thousand, six hundred this year and I'm going to be then budgeting the other twenty-eight thousand, six hundred in the second year of the grant next year. And contractual, that six thousand, eight hundred, twenty-six is money we'll be paying the friends of Covacy Watershed, who will be working with us on the Covacy Lake grant with their youth conservation corps doing lake shoreline stabilization projects and things like that. Education outreach at the schools here in Monmouth and Manchester, Winthrop, Litchfield, et cetera.
So. No, when will you, when, when will the watershed district know what their recommendations are going to be for an alum treatment in Wilson Pond?
We should know by the end of, probably this fall. Wendy's, Wendy's working on crunching all the numbers because it's all got to be volume weighted. We take a lot of samples more frequently at depth and then depending on the volume of water at that depth in the lake, then we come up with an average concentration to determine how much internal load is coming from bottom sediment. And we'll get a sense. Last time we estimated that was when we did a watershed based plan, right after Wilson Pond went on the list of impaired water bodies in two thousand and seven. We calculated it and back then it was around eighty kilograms. But there's been a couple of years, there was, three years ago, the lake was absolutely pea-super green. Somebody gave us aerial shots from a small float plane. And you could see An, Antraskogon Lake in the background, crystal blue. And Wilson Pond in September looked like, like a golf, a gulfing green, a putting green. And that was right after, as the lake had turned over. And we were only taking, you know, monthly samples at that time. And sometimes you miss that big pulse. So we did more frequently, frequent sampling, doubled up our frequency and then also the number of samples at the deep station in the lake to get a, get a sense for that. So we'll know. And we hope we don't have to do an alum treatment over there. They're not cheap.
What is Monmouth's share of the shoreline, do you know, off the top of your head?
It's not very much. It, it just goes up the Ward Road, comes all around the bottom of Wilson Pond Road and then it goes up into Placé Shores and that's about it really for shoreline on Wilson. You get up around the corner, start going up Pissmouth Piscata and you're getting into Winthrop. You go up the other side, once you get up Ward Road a little bit, you're approaching Wayne really fast.
So is that like ten percent?
Maybe ten, yeah, maybe ten.
We are going to need cots if we don't find a way.
Thank you.
Thank you. To consider an over limit permit for the work on Route Nine and two nineteen.
This is kind of a standard D O T practice, they ask if, if they.
So moved.
Second. This is what I need you guys to sign if you approve it.
So. There's a motion by, Tim, and a second by Harold to, uh, I, or approve the over limit permit for work. And all those are favorable.
I'll suggest the town manager, just hit the highlights on the budget review real quick. There's just the changes.
Yep, just the significant changes. But we have a guy here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm here just in case you have questions, I'm also.
I will do, I'm, I'm going to start with his, just so that he can leave if he would like. I know on yours it is, mine it's not.
You want mine?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Might have another one, but I don't know what I do. Most of the increases, and so with the ARPA thing, there'll be four thousand dollars coming out of this budget because we had put money in there for the shed. So this will get reduced by that amount. Most of the increases in here is because we've given the rec department the ownership of this building. So that's why there's electricity and, and all that stuff. The costs associated with maintaining this building have been put into this budget because their offices will be up here. So that's where most of this, that's where most of the, the changes are, like the sewer and electricity and all that.
What was the reason?
Right now, we have no budget for this building. The money is coming out of the Cottrell sale. So we needed to put it somewhere. So we thought that since, since this would kind of be rec's home, we thought it might be appropriate to put it in their budget.
So to research, as I did with Lori, it's about ten thousand dollars to maintain this building with electric, sewer, et cetera.
It's, it's just an expense that if it wasn't, if they, if there wasn't a budget line in recreation, it would be folded into admin.
Or building.
Right, maintenance or whatever. And so it's, 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 it's an expense, right, exactly.
My only question is the winter carnival. I never knew there was a winter carnival. There's a winter carnival.
When?
Says thirteen supplies for winter carnival in first aid supplies. Under general supplies, it says winter carnival. So just wondering what the winter carnival is because I never knew there was one.
I didn't.
So it says line three thirteen, I don't know if you have the budget line there.
Are you looking on your own, Joe?
That should not be in there. That.
Is the note wrong? Is that, okay.
I'll correct that. I don't see it on my.
It's right here.
So it's really just first aid. Three thirteen on the budget line says general supplies.
But then if you read the note, it says.
So the note's wrong.
Yeah, now that's, yeah.
What is that?
It's just off the supplies and first aid stuff.
Yeah, exactly.
It's a wrong note.
Come forward again.
Everybody okay with that one?
Yeah. So now, are you happy with?
Yeah. We are, we're in the process of having a, an open house to figure out what we can do with the space over here. I put a survey out on Facebook this past winter about what we could offer. And we had some decent feedback, there were twenty-nine responses. I'm going to resubmit the survey, do it again. But we're thinking about offering yogurt and a coffee hour in the morning for a couple of days a week for elderly in the community and other options as well.
Well, that's where I think if you do something in print, because my mother would never take a Facebook, you know, survey. And so I'm sure there's a lot of older folks in town, I wouldn't do a Facebook survey. So there's a lot of other ways to reach people, whether it's, you know, having something on the counter, at the town office, or putting something in the Winthrop advertiser with a survey that people could cut out and mail in or drop at the town office, cut it out and drop it at the town office. You'll reach a million more people by, excuse me. Oh yeah, or have something at the polls like we did last year because you're, like you said, you had twenty-eight responses on Facebook. I mean, I know my mother never saw that, I didn't, I only stumbled across it. So I, there's, I think there's a lot of more effective ways to reach people for surveys of what they'd like to do for programming, so.
Yep.
So we, I'm moving on to the administration budget now.
Yes, thank you.
Most you do. It looks like a significant increase in this budget, but it's because I removed the cost centers for the treasurer and the town clerk because both of those are still need. And we use the same office supplies and everything, it's all, we're all sort of the same people in the town office. So I thought it would just be more, it's just easier not to have all these different cost centers with bills that are basically the same thing, just being charged to different groups. So that's most of this increase in here. There is a, there is a pretty significant increase in the computer line and that's because we're anticipating making some pretty significant changes. Some of them are necessary for the police department. They can't have their, their current setup, as you know, they can't be feeding their computers wirelessly from the town hall anymore. It's going to require some switching gear. And we're going to a company that can kind of maintain everything so that he can be in compliance for his audits and just so that we have some sort of consistent help desk, help that all the town departments can work through. So that's, that's what, that's a, that's pretty significant across there. I'm trying to think. It's like the auditor moved in here, so that's a thirty thousand dollar add to this budget, even though it's not, it's not really much of an increase over year over year, just in a different place.
One thing Justin and I would strongly suggest is putting some money in the budget for risk training.
Okay.
You know, cyber, scams, cyber attacks, phishing.
Yep.
Ninety-five, over ninety-five percent of all breaches are from somebody who opened something in an email or on a website they should not have done. And if they just had read it a little closer, they would have seen that the English was improper. There, there would have been clues for them not to do what they did.
Yep.
And that kind of training is the most valuable thing you can do for the employees.
Yes. This, uh, this vendor that we're looking at going to, they have an option in their, in their monthly maintenance fees that basically we pay like a dollar and a quarter every month and they will ping people in their emails to take these little five-minute quizzes or whatever.
Well, I think M M A will also do risk management assessment and training.
Okay.
Yep.
Good. The other thing to think about too is like our company does is, is they'll send out marked phishing attacks and then the employee fails. It doesn't hurt anything, but they get feedback on how they failed.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good suggestion. We did that when I worked at State.
And I know, but I mean, for HIPAA, you have to, one of the big things is having security assessments. So your, your tech person should be going through all those hit lists anyway and seeing what backdoors they can find and what's open and available.
And M M A is getting very nervous because more and more towns are asking them to insure them for these, you know, when they lock down your systems. So they're starting to ask a lot of questions on our insurance thing about what we have and all that. And I think that eventually that will start hitting our rates if we're not meeting some of these criteria.
And that's one of the things that's recommended is that people have, you know, a separate insurance policy for a cyber attack that would shut you down.
Right, because it's very expensive to undo.
Exactly, exactly.
We undo assessing?
Yep. There's really nothing changing in here, other than, other than just the licensing costs. For the software went up and I moved her office supplies into the admin budget again because she just comes across the hall and takes them out of our closet anyway. So it might probably just be all that's. Ambulance services, this had a pretty big change, their rate system changed, they reallocated it. So you'll notice there, there's a significant, pretty significant hike there from fifty-seven thousand to seventy-four this year. And it's just, they reallocated the way that they're handing out the money and we have a lot of calls. So that's kind of how it works.
I know at one point, we had a previous member had talked about doing an R F P at some point to find out if there's another ambulance service that has any interest in having a location that would service our town and be close. So that's something that, you know, it's something to think about.
One other thing to think about though for this increase is the, the price of fuel has skyrocketed. And so we should be, I actually looked at this and said, this is really pretty conservative considering what the cost of fuel was.
I also understand that they've had quite a significant increase in uncompensating calls.
That and, and all the P P E expense.
Yeah, the P P E was quite, it's probably three, four hundred percent of the year before or more.
Justin, did you include something for a consultant for the assessor? I'm not seeing it on the line.
Right, that was going to be a question, thanks for bringing that up, Ken. So it was going to be, I think the thought was that if you were going to do that, that we put in, we put an article on the warrant, it's less than a five thousand dollar expense. I would suggest that if you want to do that, we just add, you know, that forty-eight, seventy-five or whatever it was, just put it right in the assessing budget. That's up to you, I didn't know which direction you wanted to take, if you want, if you want the voters to decide that expense or you just want to add it into the.
This was the consultant to take a fresh look at the C M P substation that hasn't been assessed, other than self-reported data from C M P. And every year, C M P's been asking for a ten percent discount, according to their records.
Yeah.
Every year for the last six years.
I have no objection.
I talked to Donna about it a few times and she thinks it would be a wise thing to do. That in the end it would wind up maybe benefiting around and not costing us that.
Forty-eight hundred dollars would be well spent.
Yes. There's not really anything that exciting in the employee benefits amount. We don't know, we haven't started negotiations yet with the union. So we don't really know where that, we're not going to know where that is, time to make decisions about that. But other than that, I don't think there's anything significant in this area that's any different. General assistance, this, this has been this rate for a long time. I think you probably could cut it in half, but that's up to you whether you want to be able to do that. We don't have a choice about whether we pay this or not. It's one of those expenses that it can overdraw. We have to issue this money, whether we budgeted for it or not. But if you look back, just the last couple of years, I mean, last year we spent five hundred dollars, year before that it was only sixty-five. And we're budgeting like ninety-eight or almost ten thousand in this line. Most of the people that come in, they, they ultimately don't qualify for general assistance and they get their heating fuel through the heating fund. But I'm not sure your comfort level with that, but it, it hasn't, I went back, back a few more years than you can see here and it hasn't approached that line, but it's.
I think that would be a good offset for the assessing increase.
Okay.
If we cut it in half.
Okay. Risk management, these are just our, this is our general liability insurance and workers' compensation. These are, these are both kind of guesses because we're on a calendar year with them and we don't really know. So they kind of tell you what kind of an escalator they estimate. It isn't what it is.
It's not bad.
Right. Unclassified, so this is the, the Mill Foil Inspection, this is the request that you have in front of you, the couple of pages I gave you from the, from the Friends of the Covacy Watershed and outlined where they're going to put the money. The Woodbury Pond Dam, the reason why this one is, is that low is because they are planning on bonding this out over five years. And because of the way that would work, if they, if they got everything in a row and they went to bond, we would have an interest-only payment next May and we only paid twenty percent of it. So it's like eight hundred and something dollars is all we'd be on the hook for next year. It would be in the out years, it would be more than that. So it's, it's not bad for next year, I'm just expecting it to be a big number we'd have to deal with, but it's not.
Tens of thousands?
Yes. It's, it's going to be, but it could be around five hundred thousand to do that dam.
So my silly question about the hundred dollars, we rent that parking lot?
Yes.
Next to the railroad tracks?
Yeah.
I never knew that.
It used to be twenty-five dollars.
But what do we rent it for? The railroad charges us?
Yeah.
I guess I just.
It used to be where the station is, you know.
I remember the depot, well, I don't remember it, it was gone before I came along. But the depot was there, my mother rode the train in there, so.
They wanted a big increase and we, we talked.
They wanted a big increase and we, we talked.
They, we have to do that to cover their liability.
Yes. I just never. The railroad tries their stack there, so.
So capital improvements, I threw a number in here, I, I, I'm still trying to work with a vendor, I'm gonna try to work with a vendor that Litchfield is using for the Woodbury. Damn, they said they would be interested in it. I don't even have a back of the envelope. I threw ten thousand in there for them to do the assessments on both, that may be high, maybe, oh, I'm not sure, but that was my best guess of that. The, um, streetlight purchasing, if you want to do that, that's why that's in here. That would be a, a separate warrant article, but I'm trying to identify it somewhere in your budget process so that you know that there's this. Woodya Woods Reserve, this is something the Conservation Commission is asking as a warrant article, which you'll see when you review the thing, they would like to set up. A reserve fund for Woodya Woods and they're asking for an initial. Um, a, a amount of twenty-five hundred to go into there, so they can fix the bridges in the Woodya Woods, the, the little woods things that they put in there, yeah.
Isn't there quite a bit of money in the. Woodya Woods Fund already from the tree cutting years ago, there should still be like twenty-five thousand dollars.
There is some money in there. They probably could utilize that, but this is what, this is what their committee asked for, so I'm just putting it on here.
Well, that's what that was for specifically.
Yeah, yeah, I thought it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
And, and it was supposed to last until they do another tree cutting and, I don't know, ten, fifteen, twenty more years, whenever it is.
Yep. Weekend. The warrant article, as I have it drafted now, creates the Woodya Woods Reserve Fund and it asks for twenty-five hundred from the general fund to go into it. If you don't want to do that, we can just strike that part and just create the reserve fund. And then I'll just move all the money that's currently in this carry forward account, I'll move it into the reserve fund and then.
That sounds like a great idea to start with.
Yeah.
Road improvements, I just threw this number in here because there, I don't have a decision on how much you want to. Put into the roads budget, but I moved it basically out of Dan's budget and put it over here, because it's just, it is a capital expense. So I'm just reflecting that number here, so whatever you want to do with it is.
So my question would be, can we, would that be the proper place to have the money that we would be spending to address those critical area, cr- critical needs areas on Cressy Road?
It could be. What I was gonna bring to you as well as I was gonna bring to you, setting up a, a road improvement reserve fund, so this money, and I was gonna direct that eighteen thousand that you have into there. So no matter what you do next year, if we come back and the paving stuff is out of this world and you're like, no, we want to wait a year, it'll just be sitting there waiting for next year and you can put another two hundred and then be five hundred or whatever.
That's what you should do.
Yeah.
Okay. Good.
So, so. Are we, how much are we planning on putting in the road reserve fund?
That, I don't know. This is the number that I put in there, because it's kind of the one that's always been used and I haven't had any other direction other than that. So right now it's at that, that two hundred and fifty thousand mark. If you want to go more like Dan requested, quite a bit more than that, we.
Sure. Well, what we have to look at, of course, is the impact on the taxpayers. And, and see where, try to, try to estimate where it might end up. We don't know what the school's gonna do yet.
Right.
We don't know.
Actually, we do. We know a little bit about what the school's gonna do. I went to their budget meeting last week and they haven't looked at revenues yet, so that's this week's budget meeting is to analyze all of the revenues, the income for the school. And of course, uh, they're still negotiating with, uh, three different unions to figure out their labor costs. Exactly.
My, my point was, we don't really know what they're gonna do, but I think. Given, given the union increases.
If you, Jim, if you let me finish my sentence, I'll tell you what I do know. Okay, and so what we do know.
You didn't interrupt me too. But go right ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate the floor. So what we do know is that the school is showing. Uh, is expecting, uh, somewhere between us, uh, I think what they said was a six to nine percent increase when you look at. The negotiating range. Of what's left on the table to decide for their labor costs. They're working very hard to reduce that. Superintendent has asked them to take a second look to see if they can shave a percentage point off of that range. What we do not know is what monmus share of that increase is going to be, because some of that will depend. On, uh, state revenue, state aid, and how the state tells the school, uh, district to distribute the costs of the school. So, uh, we know that their, their, their basic cost level is going to be somewhere in the ballpark of what we are seeing inflation right now.
And we also don't know how the state's gonna finalize the town evaluation.
Right.
That'll be a large determining factor.
Exactly. I think that topic will come up this week in the revenue analysis, though. We'll, we'll get a town by town breakdown of. Exactly what the, what the valuation is and what the towns, each member town is responsible for.
So I think to, to address a critical area that, that, that I am very concerned with that Tim brought up. Um, is, is trying to hold the town appropriation flat to last year. Um, and last meeting, Tim, uh, Kent brought up. The possibility of, of using some of the, uh, undesignated fund balance, which is currently hovering around twenty percent, I think you said, which is approximately two million dollars.
Yep.
Somewhere in that neighborhood. To, to use about half of that to, uh, to fund. The road improvements line and to, uh, to fund the, the, uh. Paving for some critical pieces of road that are really broken up. Um, so we'd be able to, we'd be able to use. Some of that money to do those things and then my thought is use the rest of the money to, to offset any other budget line increases, so we can try to hold a flat municipal appropriation. So I, I don't know how everybody feels about that, but I, I think in this particular budget year, if we can, if we can do that, we still have a very, we'd still have a very solid. Uh, reserve account and we'd be, we'd be, uh. We'd be helping the people not to have a, at least on the municipal side, any, any type of increase on the appropriation.
So would that, uh, Harold, would that, uh, imply then that the salt shed? Uh, idea would go to the voters as a separate, uh, separate item?
No, actually it won't go this year, because, uh, we do what, um, Pete. Uh, uh, thought would be a good strategy, uh, there won't be any money, we won't ask for any money this year. We'll go through the winter and by the time we get to, to March of next year, Dan will be able to tell us what size building he needs and we will price that out. And then we can go with a warrant article that. That, and, and we may be in great shape next year and have some more overlay money that we could throw towards that or, or whatever, but at least we'd have. We're not asking for a six hundred thousand dollars to build a salt shed when all we maybe really need is four hundred thousand or three hundred thousand, depending on the footprint and. And, and so forth, so I really, you know, from what I heard, we won't even be asking for that money this year. That'd be something to go on next year for.
Jeff, if you want to take a suggestion. Are there, are there any risks to the town's liability if we have an incident with, uh. With this old storage process that we currently use?
We, uh, just since I've been here, we've had a complaint filed against us, the DEP's investigating, but I don't think they've ever found anything in the past, but.
Well, the thing.
It's an issue, right? Because people do, they do drive by and they see it sitting out there, so your natural thought is that's running down the road and into the catch basins and everything else, but.
They've never seen the salt pile at Sprague Energy. A billion tons of salt sitting right out in the open.
Exactly. They were pushing it around with the bulldozer.
Years ago, there was a grant program from Maine DEP for salt sheds.
Right.
Monmouth applied several times. It was determined each and every time. There was absolutely no risk to the watershed posed by anything we were doing at our public works.
That is true.
So we could not get any grant money.
Okay.
So. Yeah, Pete would tell you, we, we, we were like a level five and you had to be at least like a two to even be considered.
So, so I, I don't, I don't see any reason why we couldn't go to, uh, salt priority for this coming winter. And, and find out exactly what our needs are and then. Next warrant, next budget cycle, uh, we'd have a, we'd have a very solid idea of how much we need to ask for to build the, what we need.
So, so I'm understanding your suggestion then that we, uh, we move the undesignated fund balance from approximately twenty percent. We, we still need to get a hard number on that one, because I don't know that we know exactly where it is.
It'll still be kind of loosey, because we're a full year behind on our audits.
Yeah, but we move that to something in the neighborhood of ten percent.
Somewhere in that neighborhood.
Freeing up, uh, funds that would be then dedicated. Uh, to, uh, holding the line on, uh. Uh, any municipal budgetary increases.
Right, so my, my first priority is, as I think Tim rightfully pointed out, with all the stress that, that people on fixed incomes. Are facing with the cost of food, the cost of fuel, the cost of electricity. I think it would be, um. Actually our duty to them to try to present a flat appropriation with any of the resources that we have. And then once we've done that, use whatever is left out of that ten percent to fund. The road improvements line and to, to, you know, increase the paving budget above two hundred thousand or whatever that would bring.
Is there, is there a way that we could give, uh, some flexibility to the folks in public works so that, uh. Well, number one, I mean, we get another bite at the apple in terms of. Uh, the cost of asphalt that we're all expecting, right? I mean, we can say yes or no to an RFP. Uh, response to an RFP when it comes before us and we can say, sorry, but that's just, you know. Uh, too expensive to pave a mile, we'll, we'll wait, thank you. Or, um, is there, is there a way in the, in the. Question that we could give some flexibility to Dan to do non-asphalt types of things?
Yeah, uh, with the, with the, um. With the reserve fund language I'm gonna present to you, it basically says to make road repairs or paving within the town of Monmouth, so he would be able to use that for whatever you guys designated was the best use for. Well, it isn't a reserve fund, it does require a vote of, of the board, so whatever his plan comes back, he has to bring that to you and you have to agree with what he's gonna spend on. It won't be in his operating budget, it's in a reserve account.
Okay.
Well, and, uh. Obviously, uh. Those funds would be very well spent, not necessarily on paving, but on, uh, repairing and replacing the under road.
Yep.
And, and places like the Cressy Road and the top of the cemetery road and these other mud pits.
Yes, and with the reserve of, with the national reserve fund, I have to take it and I have to segregate that money from the general fund, because it has to earn interest. So I have to go to the bank and say, put it over here and keep track of the interest that it's earning and it has to go to that. Account, so if you didn't pay next year and that two hundred and fifty thousand was there, you might make five bucks or something. Over next year with the interest rates, but yeah.
So this is, uh, this is an important thing, I think we should say for the public record, and I don't want to drag this mean longer than we need to, but, uh. You know, having, uh, an undesignated fund balance of twenty percent in an inflationary environment where. Any money that you're, you know, holding in an account, um, is losing eight percent a year, uh, is essentially, uh, losing, losing value. And so, um, I think by shifting the undesignated fund balance percentage from twenty down to ten, where we still have. A, a cushion, we still have a rainy day fund. Um, we want the town to be able to cash flow without having to borrow money on a temporary basis. But what that does is it allows us to free up some of these resources and put them into infrastructure things in the town, rather than. Sit in an account losing eight percent for a rainy day fund that are. That even our accountants are saying is perhaps too high. You know, out, we're, we're an outlier for towns of our size.
Well, they've always recommended three months of expenses. Will we still have three months of expenses at ten percent?
Uh, yeah, we should. I can do that calculation and bring it back.
That would be good to know, yeah.
All right, and if we have to adjust from ten percent, you know, from, uh, having it ten percent to have it eleven percent, so we have the three months, well, whatever.
Right, whatever it is, yeah, you can pick that up.
Cause I, I'd rather see it a little higher, but, uh, obviously, we don't want it to be in a situation where we are. Um, losing money to inflation, considering inflation is gonna be kind of miserable the next couple of years.
Uh, one, one last thing is that, you know, in the worst case scenario. If we made a mistake or there was a crisis or there was a miscalculation by our accountant or whatever. And we did have to borrow money as, as revenue enhancement or revenue anticipation notes. The interest on that the town would end up paying on those notes is like what, one, two percent?
It's quite low.
It's very low, so it's very reasonable. We've got a very good credit rating.
I can try to, I can tell you from past experience, when we've had to do it in years past. A, a ninety day note for, uh, oh, I think we took a ninety day note out for five hundred thousand a couple of times. Uh, we paid less than five thousand dollars in interest.
Right, so.
It was miniscule.
So just for the public record, there is a safety net and a plan if something goes wrong. Uh, but what we're doing is just sort of recalibrating our cash balance to something that's more realistic in terms of our new economic environment.
Yep. Pete, you want to go through the, the revenues? You want me to go on to that? Cause there, there's more capital items that are. That are not one-time purchases, if you will, that, that are in this plan and I, I just, I just need direction to put it into the warrant, so if you go to this. Everybody have one of these?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, it's probably mine.
Maybe I stole it.
Yeah, I think so.
So the other items that I, I had in here, I increased that, the dam assessment fund, but that's what that is, that, that's five thousand in here, but it moved it to ten thousand in the capital plan. The plan is for next year, uh, Paul is going to the, uh, three-year lease arrangement for a new cruiser, the one, so that's in here currently. And, um. Where, where it says public works and it lists the Chevy that, I, I put that there just to remind me which truck we were talking about, but I think he would rather have a Ford, I think Dan has, but this is. This is your one ton, uh, replacement, correct?
Yes.
So the way that I have this in here right now is I have that over kind of a five-year. Uh, lending situation, that's why that first year payment is low, because again, it's, it's one, it'll be one of those interest only payments and I just want to know whether you want to include that this year or not.
What's the, uh.
Oh, okay, all right.
It's really a one-ton truck, right? Or, or, or something larger than F five fifty or, or what?
No, no.
It's a small dump truck.
And that's what we, when we, when years ago, when we started the lease purchase program. Our intent was that we would always be sent, spending roughly the same amount of money every year, because when the lease falls off, the next lease comes off.
Okay.
That way we don't, we're not using thirty-year-old trucks, trying to make them work. We're, we're at, at a, our target is to replace a vehicle every ten years or less.
This vehicle is, the next year places a twenty-eleven and it's the one that I can't get the transmission part for.
Right, so that, that's right on schedule to be where we thought we'd need to replace it anyway, so it's. I, I'm just trying to give you some.
Yeah, no, no, I, I appreciate it, but I just. We're running up against the clock, so it's just one of those things, I have to get your feedback, so I know what to show you next meeting.
Sure.
So I think that's, that's it for that. Stuff at the bottom, those are TIF expenditures, if, you know, for the sidewalks and stuff, that's not, we don't have to decide that now.
It's marvelous.
That's all I have, other than the warrant, unless anybody has more budget questions.
Let's move on to the warrant.
So, uh, Blue Rock Earthworks Inc., solid waste, five thousand, eleven dollars, Central Main Power, two thousand and nine dollars. Sides, sides or Kides Corporation, Cutting Edges, conveyor chain, two thousand four hundred and four, I don't know. No, DJ's.
Spiking survey.
Survey, okay, there we go, very good. DJ's Municipal Supply Truck Creator, eight thousand six hundred and thirty dollars, Dennis K. Burke. Fuel, one thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars, fielding oil and propane, five thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars. Thermal Industries Bulk Waste Demo, one thousand two hundred and thirty-one. I Output Inc., this is the, the new lighting, it comes to haul, twenty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars. Main equalization assessing, two thousand four hundred and eighty-seven. The Health Trust, twenty-nine thousand two hundred and eight per insurance, main waste energy recycling, one thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. Monmouth Water Association, Water Service, twelve hundred and eight. New England Salt Company, seven thousand one hundred and six, Treasurer State of Maine for motor vehicles, seven thousand. Treasurer State Domain for Motor Vehicles, seven thousand four hundred and seventy-eight and three thousand three hundred and sixty-two.
Move it to the warrant.
Second.
My, uh, Tim, second by cat to pay warrant number eighteen. All those are paper.
We adjourned.
Second.
Those are paper.